Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
President.
Councilwoman Tibbs.
President.
Councilwoman Bench.
President.
Mayor Protem O'Neal.
President.
Councilwoman Klorus is excused. Councilwoman Moore.
President.
Councilman Balls.
President.
Councilman Clark.
Here.
Mayor Browning. We have eight members present and one absent mayor.
Okay, and just a reminder to the audience and to city council members, it's a good time to check your phone to make sure that all the electronic devices are turned down for us. Please remain, please remain quiet, refrain from speaking, cheering, booing, or rude or other obnoxious behavior. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. We are at announcements. I do have a few. Due to inclement weather last Friday, the Riverfront Development Commission, their annual cleanup day will be on Friday, May 29th, at 8:30 a.m. starting at the docks on Ojiboy Island. Volunteers and donations are welcomed and very much appreciated. Also, City Hall will be closed Monday, May 25th, for the Memorial Day holiday. Also, a revised agenda has been distributed for the addition of an ordinance introduction. Also distributed are revisions of Council Communication 2 regarding the ninth-period budget adjustments and Resolution 1 regarding the approval of the fiscal year 2015-16 budget. These revisions provide clarification language. And Mayor, we have proclamations this evening. Our first proclamation is designating May 2015 as Mental Health Month. And present is Tim Neinmeyer, Director of Recipient Rights and Customer Service of the Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority.
Good evening, Tim. Tim, great honor. Let me read this proclamation, and then afterwards, you receive it. We'd love to have you say a few words to us. So, the proclamation, "Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall physical health and emotional well-being, and whereas mental illness will strike one in five adults and children in a given year regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, religion, and economic status, and whereas people who have mental illness can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas an established two-thirds of adults and young people who have mental health disorders are not receiving the help they need, and whereas the cost of untreated and mistreated mental illnesses and addictive disorders to American businesses, governments, and families has grown to $113 billion annually, and whereas community-based services that respond to individual and family needs are cost-effective and beneficial to consumers and the community, and whereas the National Mental Health Association and its national partners observe Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health and illness. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Mental Health Month. In the City of Saginaw, I urge all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in our community to commit to increasing awareness and the understanding of mental health, diagnosis and treatment, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 18th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2013. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Councilmembers, Amos O'Neal, Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Larry Klorus, Daniel Fitzpatrick, Floyd Clark, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, Timothy Morales, City Manager." Congratulations. Come up and receive this for us, please. It's okay to say a few words now?
Yes, please. Thank you very much, Mayor Browning and the rest of the city council for this proclamation. I'm here on behalf of Sandra Lindsay, our Chief Executive Officer, and the Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority Board. We very much appreciate the support from the City of Saginaw, and we hope that we are doing well for the citizens of Saginaw to provide good mental health treatment and to express to the community how important mental health treatment is for the entire community. I also want to say thank you for the approval of putting our mental health banners up in two locations in the city. They've been up for a couple of weeks now, and we really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Very important talk about.
Mayor, your next proclamation is designating May 25th, 2015, as Theodore Redkey Day. Present our Friends of Theodore Redkey Committee.
Former Mayor Joyce Seals and also Annie Rensford, is that correct? Let me read this proclamation first, and then soon after, we would love to hear a few comments from you, please. It's proclamation, "Whereas Theodore Redkey, a famous poet, was born May 25th, 1908, and died August 1st, 1963, and whereas Theodore's birthplace at 1805 Grashet Avenue in the City of Saginaw is maintained as a museum in his honor, and whereas Theodore attended the University of Michigan, earning an A, B, and M.A. degree, and briefly attended law school before entering Harvard University. The Great Depression caused Theodore to leave school. Theodore then taught English at several universities, including Lafayette College, Pennsylvania State University, and Bennington College, and whereas Theodore also taught at Michigan State University in East Lansing. During this period of time, he became a well-known poet and author, and whereas Theodore continued writing poetry and books, which resulted in receiving a Pulitzer Prize, two National Book Awards, and the Bolingdon Prize, among many other honorable awards. And whereas Theodore's legacy remains strong in the City of Saginaw, his final resting place, as his remains are interned at Saginaw's Oakwood Cemetery, and whereas in April 2012, the United States Postal Service dedicated a postage stamp in honor of Theodore Redkey, the Redkey Forever Stamp. And whereas Theodore once was quoted as saying, "A lively, understandable spirit once entertained you; it will come again. Be still, wait." As we proudly honor this magnificent individual, we know the wait is over, as he is before us and will continue to entertain us through his poetry and writings. Now therefore be resolved, I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, hereby proclaim May 25th, 2015, as Theodore Redkey Day. In the City of Saginaw, call upon the citizens of this community to reflect on and honor the life of this brilliant individual. In witness there, hereunto, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 18th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2015. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Councilmembers, Amos O'Neills, Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Larry Klorus, Daniel Fitzpatrick, Floyd Clark, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, Timothy Morales, City Manager. Thank you very much. You want to receive this, and then we'll love to hear some comments from you.
listening, we're proud to be here, part of the board of the Theodore Redkey, and I actually got involved while I was on city council, because I was interested in knowing what's happening over there on Grashet Street. A lot of great things are happening, and the fact that he was born here, in this city, and is known across the world, but in the City of Saginaw, a lot of people really don't know about Theodore Redkey. We need to change that, and hopefully, with the information we're going to give you today, that you will have a chance to come over to the House, if not in May, but soon, and just stop by and see what we have to offer at Theodore Redkey House. It's exciting, all the changes and improvements we've made in the House. That's what it's all about. And it's interesting that you just gave a proclamation to mental health. We all know that he had some mental health challenges, but it did not stop him from being one of the world's greatest poets. And to me, that's an encouragement for our young people in this town. Regardless of what problems you have, you can overcome if you put your mind to it, because God is giving every child, everyone, an ability, some type of skill. They just need to hone it, shape it up, and they can be great too, and that's the hope that I think Theodore Redkey brings to our young people. I'm going to let Annie say something now.
Just a bit. Theodore Redkey always wanted to be known in his hometown, and that's what we're about as the Friends of Theodore Redkey, the foundation. I met Joyce when she was the mayor, and she called the Redkey House "A House of Hope." It's a teaching house, and since that time, Joyce and I have worked on language arts camps in the summer. This will be our third year working together. We started with seven kids. We're up to 60. We're into two sessions. They review their language arts, and then they learn about the poet. It's a wonderful time, and we teach them that learning to learn is fun. We also have, which we're passing out, a whole summer of activities. We won the Arts Award in 2008, his centennial, and we have our 15th season of literary picnics in the backyard. Two of them are especially for families this year, and so we hope you'll join us. Dal Chemical has gotten behind us and has really done wonderful things with the house and the landscaping, plus Janet Martin's Family Trust. We are just on a roll. We're the anchor of the community, and we will welcome the mayor at our picnic and everyone here. Picnic on May 25th, his birthday. He was born on the same day as Raymond Carver, and Carver wrote Birdman. It won the Academy Award this year, and Carver was born on May 25th, died August 2nd in the morning. Redkey, May 25th, died August 1st. So they're just 30 years apart and almost on the same cycle. Interesting, but please do come, and Mayor, you pronounce his name correctly. Most people don't, because R-O-E-T-H-K-E. Even as an English teacher, I stumbled on it for a while, but you've got it. Hey, thank you so much. It's an honor to have this. Thank you.
Mayor, your next order of business is public hearings.
And before we begin our public hearings, I have some notes here. The purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive comments for consideration at the time of action may be taken. Public comments shall not be addressed to individual councilmembers, city staff, or the audience. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the hearing. Begin by stating your name. The main applicant or main presenter will be allowed 15 minutes. Other speakers will be limited to five. Speakers may ask general questions, but shall not ask questions of specific council members. And Madam Clerk, our first public hearing.
Thank you. It's in regards to City of Saginaw Proposed Budget and Property Tax Millage for Fiscal Year 2015-2016.
Is there anyone to speak on that tonight? Is there anyone to speak on the public hearing tonight? Third and final time, is there anyone to speak on the Proposed Budget and Property Tax Millage for Fiscal Year 2015-16? Being none, entertain a motion then to close the public hearing? Moved and supported. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Our second public hearing is on the Special Assessment District for Police and Fire Millage for Fiscal Year 2015-2016.
And is there anyone to speak on the Special Assessment District for a Police and Fire Millage? Okay, good.
It's not that easy. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager. My name is Brandon Hosbeck, Vice President of the Firefighters Union. I come before you tonight regarding the millage, specifically the appropriation of the millage. I'd like it to be on record, the fire department is disappointed with the percentage of funding that we are receiving. Before we received the SAFER grant, which we got two years ago, which you all are well aware of, it's about to expire, we received 43% of the millage, which is in line with what we've been receiving. It was 40% at the time the millage was originally passed in 2006, and up until that point, it had maintained that. When we received the grant in fiscal year 2014, we immediately saw a 22% decrease in our millage funding. We received 21% of the millage. At that time, we didn't make any waves about it, because all of our employees were employed. We were receiving SAFER grant funds, so it wasn't an issue to us. Currently, we're receiving 28%. Again, we have everyone employed. There's no one currently laid off, so there's not an issue. However, as you know, we are facing possible layoffs coming up for the next fiscal year if we do not receive a SAFER grant. It's proposed currently that our funding for the millage is going to be 34%. That's what we're going to receive of the total millage funding. It's our belief that it should be returned to the amount we were receiving before the SAFER grant, which would be 40%. That number would approximately be $173,556 in additional funding that we would receive, which is enough for two more positions, which would maintain the fire department at 40. It's the union's belief. We have not spoken with any members of the administration with the fire department or at City Hall, but it is our belief that with 40, we could possibly keep a third fire station open, which would allow for three instead of two, which is the current proposal. We're willing to sit down with the city to work with some ideas and things that we can possibly do to save ourselves from these layoffs. Two years ago, we brought some things to the table. Unfortunately, a lot of those were implemented. We don't have those anymore, because they were implemented. They were outside of the contract. So, for instance, the overtime. You know, we pitched some ideas about vacation slots, and that's not in our contract. It's not, it need to be negotiated or anything. So, city went ahead and did that, had some savings, so that's gone. We can't propose that anymore, because it's been done. But we are willing to sit down. I think we're going to do that this week with some of the administration. But I just wanted you all to know that we are a little disappointed that we aren't receiving the 40% we were prior to the SAFER grant, and we'd hope you would take that into consideration as you view the budget. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak? Step up to the podium.
My name is Bill Scheiburger, and I'm a homeowner at 1137 Howard Street, 48601, and that is on the east side of Saginaw in the Cathedral District. And I wanted to speak on this millage, especially the split. I can remember that, 60-40. There are a lot of citizens I can remember when that millage was being voted on by the citizens, that they wanted it to be at least 50-50. In other words, give the firefighters half of that, and that wasn't done. The more interest in Saginaw's finest, rather than looking at the other folks that risked their lives as Saginaw's bravest, that they would have an equal share, which is not done in a lot of cities. So, I would say, if you want that millage renewed in a few years, that you catch up that difference of that 40%, and I thought it was locked in stone. I don't remember the ballot wording on the proposal, but it should be in the proposal, 40% for the firefighters, and go from there. So, that's all I have, and I'm not happy about the closing of the two fire stations, and I'm going to speak later about funding for the fire department. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? Third and final time, anyone else to speak on the Special Assessment District for the Police and Fire Millage for the Fiscal Year 2015-2016? Being none, entertain a motion then to close? Then moved and supported. Any further discussion, councilmembers? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Closed.
Mayor, your next order of business is personal appearances.
Okay. And before we do personal appearances, I still have to read this anyways. Speakers are limited to three minutes. The purpose of personal appearances is to address council. Speakers shall address their remarks to council as a whole, where they shall not be addressed to individual councilmembers, city staff, or the audience. Purpose of the city council meeting is to discuss city businesses and not to deal with individual personalities. Personal abusive attacks, slanderous or profane remarks about any person shall not be permitted. Speakers are asked, may ask general questions about the topic of their presentation. Questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speakers shall not ask questions of specific council members. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Our first speaker tonight is Willie Page. And I do understand we got word that he was not going to, okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Scheiburger.
My name is Bill Scheiburger. I live in 1137 Howard, and I wanted to speak on funding for the Saginaw Fire Department. That's sort of, you know, the budgets have kind of shuffled them out of the deck, so to speak, if we were playing cards here. And I think the solution lies in a book that was written by Lido Anthony Iacoca, titled "Iacoca," and that is that we, the citizenry, along with the firefighters and the people that collect the tax money, have an equality of sacrifice in how this fire department is funded. And I want to use one example. You know, people talk about skin in the game. Well, every week, on Wednesday, I place out garbage out at my curb. I do recycling every two weeks. So, the trash that I leave at the curb is equal to one five-gallon pail, two to five pounds, and for that, I pay $175 a year to the city. At the same time, the public safety millage, which if you would hold at 40%, I pay $75, and 40% of that is $30. I pay, out of all my property tax money, I pay $30 to the fire department, and I think that is grossly wrong, and something will be done about it. And I had suggested to this council before that they go, that's why I use the expression, "skin in the game." I suggested before that they go to a four-way garbage pickup stop in the city, which some cities do, and a lot of people, that just went on deaf ears. I want to bring that back up, because you'd have like $2 million almost saved. Of course, waste management would dispute those figures. I applaud the city for coming back to take over recycling, and I think that could help out. But as far as going for a tax increase, no. This has to be done first, the garbage pickup, because you're over-serving, all those green and white trucks are over-serving the city. I see them in my neighborhood, which has a lot of vacant lots, running around in circles, and I'm not a city cop. They're doing nothing illegal, but they are using our money in a way I do not approve of. And the other thing, I heard the mayor on TV talk about concessions for the fire department. I would, which I'm not in favor of.
Your next order of business is remarks of council.
Okay, and tonight, we start with Councilwoman Annie Bench.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank the Friends of Theodore Redkey Committee for continuing to keep our history alive, and it is always nice to see our former mayor, Seals, who seems to be actively involved with everything going on in the city. I see her everywhere, so it's always nice to see her. I also want to thank Community Mental Health for the very difficult job that they do in providing services to the Saginaw community. It is something that is very important, and as we heard, you know, tonight, that many of the people who are needing, in need of those services are not receiving them, and it's something that is seriously underfunded, and unfortunately, it's not a city funding thing, but it's certainly something that people need to reach out to their legislators and express support to them for funding for these types of programs, because proclamations are fantastic reminders, and they are great ways to bring out about community awareness, but when it really, where it really counts is with our legislators, who actually control the purse strings and decide whether the funding for those types of programs are important or not. I'd also like to thank Mr. Scheiburger. It's always nice to see you. I always appreciate the fact that you come with criticism, but you often come with, you know, ideas that you would like to see us look at, and that's appreciated. And beyond that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I too would like to thank Mayor Joyce Seals for appearing and all of her work that she does in the city. We just recently had a fundraiser for the Saginaw Promise Zone, and she's a lead person in that. She does a great job. She was also a lead person in a community training seminar. It was a two-day seminar, which shared results from a survey that was conducted amongst our students here in the city, and what came out of those results was basically violence and substance abuse was the two main issues that these kids feel that they suffer from on a daily basis, and I believe they're going to meet again, and they're going to talk solutions next time, so I know me, as well as the city, will probably look forward to what they have to share. Like to, I guess, recognize the city staff for their hard work in developing the budget. I know it, I know it's a tough job maintaining the level of service with decreasing revenues. It's tough. It's a living document. I'm starting to learn that, and hopefully, as things get better and things clear up, hopefully, bigger pieces of the pie can be divvied out. Our biggest concern was a decrease in revenues, specifically decline in property tax collected, and I guess I was just thinking out loud, I know a couple of weeks, there was a discussion about the 100% fine, and that was related to the non-owned occupied property ordinance, but I think a big part of that also was the dilapidated property part. Since a lot of those properties have been demolished, maybe we need to possibly revisit that fine. I guess some of our landlords say that that's more of a impediment to growth rather than encourage growth, and maybe we need to revisit that and see if we can get bodies in the system, or excuse me, in the city, if that fine is... or excuse me, in the city, if that fine is removed. There is also a cost recovery ordinance that is allowed by federal law and state law, state law. It allows fire departments to recover costs to mitigate environmental impact that stems from accidents or fire. Mesquian has it. I believe that they, I think they charge about five hundred, five hundred dollars or something like that, as cost to recover. In some cities, they even recover the whole, the whole cost for the fire department for receiving it. But for a city that is suffering from decreasing fines, if I believe, or I remember reading the budget correctly, a decrease in property taxes, maybe we need to visit some ideas where we can increase our coffers. And I believe that counties, Saginaw County has a cost recovery ordinance in their, in their, in their laws, so it's just an idea that maybe we can look into and increase some of the funding, and maybe can specifically be reserved for the fire department. As a county employee, every year, I, I guess I'm a little concerned about whether or not I'm gonna be employed the following year, so I'm very empathetic to the fire department, as well as all the city employees who are looking at, at losing their, their jobs. And it's something I've been dealing with for about ten years now, I've been a prosecutor in a county, in Wayne County, as well as here, and it's been the same story every year. But I think, I would like to do all I can to help out the fire department, just 'cause I can empathize with them. And I think a proclamation or a resolution to support the fire department and them receiving the SAFER grant, I think that's gonna be discussed under new business. Maybe that's something the city council can, can visit and possibly vote on, and get it to the federal department, who will divvy the SAFER grant, and show that the city council, not just the mayor and city manager, but the city council and the city is behind the fire department to receive the SAFER grant. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome to everybody here on another balmy day here in Saginaw, Michigan. Speaking of which, a couple of weeks ago, right after the awards for the police department, the memorial, we had a, in association with the National Day of Prayer, which was May seventh, out on the front steps of City Hall, our mayor and Councilwoman Annie Bench was there, and myself, but I was really proud of the mayor, because it was about eighty-five degrees, and he, along with a number of our city pastors, sat up there in that blazing sun, and for quite a while, and, and he got up and he, he gave some great inspiring message, and so I wanna thank you, Mayor, for, for doing that, and for all the folks who were there, in addition to former Mayor Seals, who was there. And so, without prayer, we're not gonna make it. So, I'm gonna just say that. And I do wanna say ditto to Councilman Tibbs, what you just said about the needing to find a way to creatively fund these needed departments, so. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I too wanna say good evening to the city citizens who are here and who are watching SGT, SGTV or any other station. I only have a couple of things. I do wanna mention, first of all, obviously, I wanna thank those members, citizens who are here speaking today, and the firefighter representatives who are here. I think the fire department is extremely important. We all realize how significant, first of all, the SAFER grant is, and I guess I too would concur with Councilmen Tibbs and Fitzpatrick's comments, certain we have to do everything we can to try and maintain the department, recognizing as the managers face with, and as the councils face with, the budget restraints we have, so. Next, the, I do wanna mention, last year, we honored some students at the Saginaw Career Complex, as a result of a number of participation, a number who had participated in some national, state and national competitions, and did very well. We may not, there may not be that awareness this year, but a number of those students, again, competed at both the state and national level, and competed successfully. They, they, I don't think anyone took first place again this year, but they, a large number of students did place and did very well, both at the state and national levels, and I would, they won a number of awards again, and I'd be looking forward perhaps to another resolution honoring those students. These are the future of our community, and we need to recognize them when they put forth that effort. So, I would perhaps ask the administration to look into contacting the Career Complex and seeing appropriate officials, and seeing what we could do to honor those students again this year. In fact, one of the, the Saginaw Career Complex robotics team, full disclosure, my wife is involved with him, so I know very intimately about how well they do, but they were, took second place at a regional competition, and made it to the state, to the state competition as well. So, again, these are students from throughout the community, who are putting forth a lot of effort to, and they're representing Saginaw, so recognizing these students is important. The only other thing I wanna mention is the Saginaw Event Center, and the, the First Merritt Event Park kicked off its season quite successfully the other, I think it was Friday, the other night. And there were those who thought it was quite loud, I understand, it's not exact, the music that was there with Godsmack isn't exactly my kind of music, but apparently, four thousand people didn't agree with me. That's a pretty good number of people to have downtown in our riverfront Saginaw. And it's a great kickoff for the, for the facility, and it just shows that those people who had the vision to build that facility had a good thing going, and it looks like it'll be a heck of a good summer for, for the city and bringing people downtown, so. We can't thank First Merritt enough for supporting it, and Matt Blasey from the Event Center, and all the other people who helped make that a reality. With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to the citizens of Saginaw and everybody in the audience, and thank you for coming to the city council meeting to find out what's going on in your city. You know, every year, we come at this event of the budget, and there's not enough money to go around, and you know, and it's shameful, you know, that the police or the firemen, the plug of servants of this city have to come here and, 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 and do what they have to do to get money, to keep their services going for the city. I think that the city need to explore some new ideas on how we can fund these, things that have to be funded every year. I think that we need probably sit down and have a weekend to talk about, and get input from the city to find out how we can do this. One thing that I think about, when I first ran for city council, that I didn't know too much about, but one thing I'm finding out more about is the people that don't live in the city only pay point seven-five percent of taxes, and the people in the city pay one point five. And, and I always think about, this morning, when I got up, I had a breakfast this morning with the Michigan Credit Union League in the township, and I could see all the cars hit it east on forty-six, and I was thinking, wow, look at all the people coming to towns to come and work and, and earn their money so they can go back home. And I think about that in the wintertime, when the city workers have to get up early in the morning to make sure they salt the roads, so these people can come in and get their money, and then at three or four o'clock in the afternoon, they hurry up and go back out there again and salt the roads so they can go back out, you know, and, and it bothers me to a certain extent, you know, that they don't pay for those services like everybody else do, so I think. So, I honestly think that maybe all the cities need to get together and talk something to our state legislators to find out how we can fund these things, or get them to pay the same amount of income taxes that the cities, the citizens of Saginaw pay. Sometimes, people, the citizens of Saginaw, they, they live in clutches where, if I'm on the east side, I'm going to the grocery store on the east side, I ain't gotta drive all the way, it costs time to go to the grocery store, so I don't have to use the services as much as other people that come here and take our money and run back out in the township. And I work with some of those people, and I don't like the comments that they make about having to come to work in Saginaw, then they drive back out with a, with a fat pocket every Friday. You know, that, that tees me off to the highest level, level of tea-offness. But, I'm saying all this to say that, as a city, as council people, as people that are supposed to make this thing work, we got to explore different ideas to find out how we can get some more money in this city, so the firefighters don't have to come here and say what they're saying when they're trying to service us. The police shouldn't have to do that. I, I just don't think it's fair, you know, so it's up to us to find some ideas to do that. You know, and I think about that, I, I'm employed, and some other people at the city council are employed, and we have regular jobs that we have to go to, we only have so much time to think about these ideas. You know, I, I think about it sometimes, sometime I am working on some of these ideas, and to try to find out how we can get things going better, and there's just not enough time in a day to do it, so maybe we do need to take some time off to do that. If I thought about how much I get paid for this job to go out and do it, then I really wouldn't wanna do it, but I do do it anyway, you know, because I love my city, I like what the city has done for not only me to raise my family and other families, but I think about even the families that live out in the township, and out in the county, and Chestening, and other places, that come here and get our resources and go back out. And I, I just think it'd only be fair that they help pay, because it's only right. I mean, you're here for eight hours a day, you live here, some of them bring their own lunch, they don't buy no gas in our city, they don't buy no lunch, and they still drive right back through it. So, it, it hurts me, it really does. So, I hope that maybe the city manager can think about some ideas we can do, or, or maybe some of us can call our legislators and see if we can't change some laws. They say it's hard to get them changed, but they show enough, try to bring us some new laws all the time. That's what they do, they make laws. That's what they do. So, we need to get them to do something to try to help out this issue. Some people may not think it's a lot of money, but any more money to come in this city can help us out. And we can put all that money in a separate fund of the people that don't live in the city, and put that in a separate fund. If we change the law to put it in a separate fund to help make, maintain the services that we need, because we need these services. You know, I think about a quote from Frigga Douglas, you know, he says that it's easier to raise a child than to fix a broken man, you know, and I think the city is broke a little bit, and maybe we need some new ideas and, and raise up some new stuff so we can get some things done in the city of Saginaw. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, citizens of Saginaw. First of all, I'd like to thank, well, I'd like to congratulate all of our people who got proclamations tonight. And I do plan to go to the Theater House, I always wondered what it was, so now we'll go find out what it is. The other thing is, when it comes to the millage for the firefighters and the police, firefighters, you know I got your back, you know I love, I love y'all, I love the police, but at the same time, I know that you're gonna sit down, and I'm sure that the city manager is gonna work something out, to at least we can get you back to your forty percent. This has been a phenomenal week for me. I have a birthday coming up, I'm gonna be the big six-oh, the big six-oh, so there's been a phenomenal week for me this week. The one thing that I did wanna talk about is, my, one of my partners, Mr. Clark, mentioned about the downtown area, let me say something about that. I live five blocks from the First Merritt Bank Park, and my windows shattered all night long. We gonna have to figure out a way to do something different, because we have elderly people in our neighborhood, and I know that it's, it's really, it's for, it's for the city, I do know that. But I've got complaints after complaints from elderly people, who said that they had, they closed their windows, they did everything they thought they could do to stop the noise, everything, but called the police, and I'm like, even if you call it, they ain't coming, they ain't coming, you know, and so, I, I, you know, I have some concerns about that. I've said that from the get-go. I don't know if we need to put, what is that, like a dome over top of it, so that the noise can stay confined, but I know that if you could hear it by Mayor Pro Tem's house, 'cause we called each other, you know that that's some loud noise. I mean, all we don't, we just don't see it, but we hear the loud, we heard the whole concert. And so, I, I don't know what we can do different. I hope that everybody understands that the budget is just the budget. What I really like about it is Ms. Yolanda and the team, it's a work in progress. Wherever they can make changes, they try to do it. As, I mean, I, I know, 'cause I sat down with her last year for a long time, we did a whole shift together, so that she could explain piece for piece for piece for piece. So, I, I just know that, once again, like one of my coworkers, one of my co-workers, I'm just like you, Fitzpatrick, it's gonna take a whole lot of praying for us to pull this together this year, because we don't wanna slight anybody. And if you paid attention to us in the past, we really have been making differences. I, I became a city council member just for what I'm doing. I bring you what they're saying, I'm transparent, I have no hidden agenda, I'm not going to a next level, this is my level, the city of Saginaw. So, firefighters, hang in there, hang in there, hang in there. I just believe that if you don't get the SAFER grant, I just believe that there's gonna be something there for us to help keep what we need to keep. 'Cause I don't understand the fire station clubs. I mean, Second Street is close to me, but it's not close to a lot of other people. The Gracious Street is clo, is not close to me, so if Second Street is busy, and I'm on Ninth Street, and my house catch on fire, my house gonna burn, and there's nothing we can do, and that bothers me. That bothers me, because elderly people are in their homes now, and they've worked so hard to keep them. So, you know, my heart goes out, I know about the layoff, they shut Bein' Vista down, I was a part of that, so, hang in there, it's gonna get better, and thanks again. Thank you, Mayor.
And Lawrence is recovering at home, and he's with him, as always.
And Mayor Pro Tem, able to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't wanna be redundant, but most of the comments that I've heard, I, I agree with. I do like to start out by saying that the quality of life relative to our police and fire, we've, we've done the best we could in terms of funding those, those public services, but our tax cap that we talk about every so often, really is the catalyst that restricts the city's ability to generate the necessary revenue. That's really, at the end of the day, if we look at that, that is one of the major impediments that we, we, we wrestle with, and it's like the elephant in the room, we wanna talk about it, then we'll talk about it, and we'll try to see if we get some citizen support, and then we don't talk about it, but that really is the major part of this whole mechanism. With that being said, I, I do, and really appreciate the, the commitment of our fire department in terms of what they did last budget cycle. As was mentioned, the, the sacrifice, or the skin in the game, really was evident by the reduction of overtime, by the creative into, into intentional movement towards the SAFER grant. We were able to get a big new rig, I believe, as a result of that, right? Was that a part of the SAFER grant? Well, that was a part of a, a negotiation tool, I believe, right? Cut in on me, on this, on that part, on the engine.
The engine was purchased through savings from maintenance for an old rig.
Okay.
So, the payment is, is through savings from an old rig.
Okay. Through the fire department.
Yeah, Chief had a team that worked on that, Ms. Jones worked on it, something that I've proposed for about five years before it happened.
Okay, okay. But that's all, that's all good, but it, it still reinforces the fact that there was a major commitment in terms of how can we work together as a team to come up with some alternative funding. So, to that, it needs to be commended, in terms of the percentage reduction from thirty-four to twenty-two, is that accurate? Thirty from, well, the SAFER grant was at, it was a thirty-four percent, and currently, is that twenty-eight or twenty-two? Mr. Manager?
Thirty-five.
Is it thirty-five right now?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five? Okay, okay. Right. Okay, okay. So with the opportunities, I do agree with Councilman Balls, and I've seen this done in Detroit. For example, the public and private partnerships, I'm not sure if that's something that we're working on, but, you know, again, our businesses that benefit from the quality of life that is afforded through our police and fire, you know, that may be an option. I know several businesses in Detroit purchased a whole fleet of police vehicles, and that was through public and private partnership for businesses. So there are ways to get $174,000, okay? That's the number that was quoted. And I think it would be really disingenuous for us not to work hard, and I know we are, but for that sacrifice to be made on the front end, and then now we're faced with possibly not getting the safer grant and then having that deficit. There has to be other avenues that we can work on and pursue, Mr. Manager and the finance team. You know, there's some things that's going on we probably don't know about, but if they are, it'd be nice to know about it for the sake of making sure we maintain that quality of life. So we heard you, and we appreciate all that the fire department did in the past to get us to where we are currently. I would like to also thank and commend the Public Service Department, Mr. Phil Carwatt. You've got a lot of happy people on Lapeer and 19th Street, a lot of happy people, even the folks who don't live over there, but they travel that way. That is a very busy roadway, that little short stretch of 19th Street. You would be surprised. It'd be interesting to do like a little road, you know, calculation of how many cars travel that way to see. I'll tell you, that's going to get a lot of mileage out of it in terms of appreciation from the public. So thank you for that, and we look forward to the completion of that work. I would concur, my colleague mentioned that she called me, or I called her, because I didn't know what the noise was. I thought I had a neighbor, I had to get out and go and say, hey, turn the music down, but it wasn't. That was quite loud, and, you know, I know that's something that we have to maybe live with, but there are some serious citizens in the area that did voice some concerns. But good for the city, but that noise ordinance, we have to enact. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll conclude my comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, a couple of issues, things I'd like to discuss here from here. I was very proud to see some of our council members there and ourselves at the National Day of Prayer. A lot of times these activities happen during the day, and it's hard for a lot of council people to get there. One of those coming up is this Wednesday. This Wednesday, we have a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Naval Operations Center down on Douglas Street, and that's because of the 121st Battalion Infantry of the Michigan Army National Guard, they have moved from Flint to Saginaw. And this Wednesday at 10:30, they will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony. I know that all the media is well aware of that, I see I'm writing it down real fast, but that's significant for us. And that's, any council members that can break away and make that, please, we glad to see you there. I'll be there representing the city for us. I was very impressed with the good news Phil Carwatt you shared with us, the members of TRICAP over there at the cemetery with the military, tremendous job they've done over there. There was thousands of markers and cleanup they've done to cut the grass, so we just can't thank TRICAP enough for all their help in the city also. The job that we pulled everybody. Now, because of the Memorial Weekend, we've been pulling people from other services to be able to do that, because you've got to remember, the cemeteries has three employees. Three large cemeteries, three employees. And I want to stress that because that's what's been happening over the years, over the years. So good things happening with that, and this Saturday I will, or this Monday, I will stop in at that picnic over at Redkey Park and thank Joyce Seals and the other ones for that kind of taking that over. You know, we have great success when the community takes over stuff. The Redkey Park, Friends of Redkey, Friends of the Redkey House, we got Friends of Hoyt Park, we got your, the Children's Zoo, you got the Japanese Tea House. Those are all community-run type of nonprofits, and it does tremendous for us, and we just can't thank them enough. As far as the upcoming contract and our safer grant, Bill, I'm sorry that you didn't hear the whole thing that was said on TV5. We're very proud of our firefighters, and they've made a lot of concessions over the years. But the comment was that if we do not get the safer grant, yes, we will have to go back to the table. There may have to be some concessions, and I heard that from the mic right up here. So, you know, I'm very optimistic we're going to get the safer grant. But in all reality, we will not get it three times in a row. We will not get that three times in a row, and waiting till the night that we're ready to vote on a budget is not a time to bring new ideas to the table. I want to hear these ahead of time. If we get the safer grant, and I'm just praying we do get that safer grant, we have to sit down then and start planning for the next, what's it going to look like two more years from now, three years from now? With the population that we have, with the reduction in revenue that we have, there is no new money, in fact, there's less. And I can't say enough about our fire department, our police department, our public works department, any department we have, any department, the tremendous job they're doing with the reduction in resources that we have. They've done a tremendous job. And if we can keep all four fire stations open, that's the ultimate goal. If we have to close one, that's better than two. Whatever works best that we can work out, we are ready, our city staff is ready to sit down and talk, whatever we can come up. Council members, any ideas, please, don't hold them back, share them, get them to our manager, he works for us, get them to them, and let's see what we can come up with on all these issues that we have. So a lot of stuff happening. We're getting ready for our downtown events going on at Morley Plaza with Friday Night Live. You're going to see some things in our agenda tonight. So there's some great, great things happening, and we just hope that we can manage, and I'm going to continue on just for a second. Understand, we may not hear about this safer grant, could be June, July, August, September, we don't know when they're going to give us that answer, and so we're hoping that we can maybe do something in between until we hit that safer grant, the best we can do. So with that, Madam Clerk, that ends my comments.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at reports from manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. First, just a couple of things about the budget before I move on to a few other items. As far as the safer grant, when we are preparing this budget, we have met with the fire department, with Brandon and the other officers from the union previously, and discussed this percentage. In my view, I wasn't so concerned about with the percentage of the millage, which may be an optics issue, but I'm concerned with the overall number of firefighters. And I know the mayor and I have talked about it before, I think we mentioned it in our agenda review meeting before, but what we're looking at with the safer grant, anytime we're looking at the fire department now, is where were we two years ago? And that is when the police department was reduced from somewhere, I believe around 94 personnel to 55. At that time, the fire department was scheduled to be reduced as well by 15 personnel. And then the safer grant came, so the fire department remained at the level they were at that time. And it was 15-person reduction at that time. This year, in this current budget, where we're at, we budgeted without having the safer grant, and it's a reduction of 13 personnel. So it's two fewer than we were at two years ago, regardless of what percentage is in the millage and what percentage is general fund, the number that's being reduced is too fewer than at that time. And that, the reasoning why we put that in the budget is because we do recognize changes that have been made to save overtime in the fire department. Two positions is somewhere in the neighborhood of $160,000 to $200,000, depending on overtime and benefits. So I think that the city has made an effort in recognizing those changes that were made in the fire department and working to make savings. We also have to recognize that when the changes were made, there was an overage of overtime in that line item budget a few years ago, the overtime was over budget. So there was impetus there to make changes, to have the savings as well. So there's a lot that goes into this. Now, of course, we will continue to meet with the fire department and union and try to do what we can. One of the stations that Chief Van Lu mentioned to close is about, probably a half a mile from where I live. So I know what the effect is there, and it's something that we would like to remedy to some degree. Chief Van Lu and I have met and talked about what that would be to staffing that would be required to be able to keep a station open, as many as we can. So we're aware of those numbers, and that's something that we'll continue to work for, or work toward, and I know the union will continue to do that as well. And a few of the other items, I think the Mayor Pro Tem had it right on with the property tax cap, and it's something that Councilman Clark talks about quite a bit. And where we are currently, we have the headly amendment and some other issues too, but where it really significantly affects us is, since that was passed, we probably would have had tens of millions of dollars more in revenue collected, and we would have a fund balance that could get us to a point where we get a safer grant or something like that, but that's not there. When you get right down to the bottom line, that's what the people voted for. This council has brought the tax cap back to the public, I think, at least two times in the last five years, and probably several times before that. But that's where we are with the tax cap, and it's had a very significant impact on the city for, since its passage. And you've seen it now, that was a big impact on the police reduction, it's an impact on this fire issue, it's an impact on our parks budget, which in 1979 was $2 million, and today it's less than $200,000. You don't need to be a mathematician to figure out that that's not good, and that $2 million in the late '70s today would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of $3.5 or $4 million of equivalent, and we're spending about less than $200,000. And more likely, the reason that we're doing that is because we've got DNR trust fund monies that require us to keep Celebration Park up. Most of that money that we're spending on parks and rec now is to staff the splash pad. So we see that impact everywhere, and I know a few years ago, Mayor Branch had a state of the city that addressed every department, as the mayor said, how much of an impact these losses have had on every department. So everyone does do more or less, and the city has been very creative at finding alternative funding, and I know you're all aware of that. We're always looking for new ideas. Maybe it's a time where you do look at that cap or some way of changing it, and it might not have an immediate effect on the city, but maybe in the long term, it could help resolve some issues. Income tax, typically your largest source of revenue in the city is property tax. Our largest source is income tax, and it's a matter of almost four times what the property tax is now. It's a little over $12 million, and our property tax is about 3.5 million. So it's, property, or income tax is a significant source of revenue for the city, and I understand concerns about non-residents and residents, the difference. Non-residents pay in excess of 50% of that $12 million. So there are a lot of non-residents working in the city, and we do collect a lot of revenue from them. The amounts that we can charge residents and non-residents are statutory, and they're based on population. Ours is based on a much higher population, so I don't know if we want to look at making changes, because it could be an issue for us. I was at a meeting and still having discussions with a lobbying group that we can't afford to pay, but some other income tax cities, Detroit and Grand Rapids, I think, are employing this firm. And they have a set of priorities for income tax, it does not include changing the percentages, something we could address with them, but they have it pretty lined up on two specific items that they're looking at. One of them is, it's called, I believe it's called universal collection, which would require other local units to collect income tax from city residents, from income tax cities. So if, there are certain companies out there that don't collect income taxes from people who live in income tax cities that work outside the city. We have a good relationship with a lot of the companies, and Next Year is one of them that does collect that for us. Other cities, Detroit, has a major problem with some of the companies outside of Detroit where their residents work. We don't have an issue, but I don't see a problem with supporting that. The second priority that they made was allowing a different method for enforcement if you elect to have the state collect your city income tax, which we looked at that a few years ago too, because we're always looking at different things, and it's not a cost-effective measure for the city of Saginaw, because we do a very good job of collecting delinquent taxes. But that second part of the bill that they're looking at proposing would allow those units that contract with the state, one of which is Detroit, is part of their bankruptcy agreement, to have the state collect it and have the same sanctions that the state does with income tax. I don't have a problem with supporting that either, but I think the cities that don't contract with the state should have the same ability, which would mean that the city could garnish wages and things like that, which could help us bring in more revenue. They're asking for local councils to support that, so perhaps the next June meeting, I could bring something that we could send, but I'm going to contact them and also let them know that I don't believe our city should support that unless the extension is made to all local units. So that is something that we're thinking about, and it's, like I said last time, we're always working on things, but I can't update you on every item each meeting, but those are things that we are looking at doing. The, a few other items that were mentioned, I don't believe that the city council could, of course, pass a resolution in support of the safer grant, but I don't believe that we're allowed to forward that along because of rules about lobbying, the local unit lobbying for a grant. Of course, I believe FEMA is aware that we support it because the council approved the submission of the grant. So I don't necessarily think it would be a benefit anyway. I know that the neighborhood associations are getting letters of support from the neighborhood presidents or trying to do that, and I think that's probably something that would be helpful. Councilman Tibbs mentioned a reimbursement for fire. We do have an ordinance like that, and we do charge, it's something that actually the city attorney is working on now because we have issues with it and about fairness of application, but we often have issues when there's an ordinance like that because many residents feel like they are paying for that service through taxes, so why should they pay a reimbursement ordinance as well? And there are state statutes that allow certain reimbursement ordinances, such as OUIL arrest is one that you can recoup costs for police officers and prosecution as well, counties can do that. So there's certain things spelled out, and there's certain things that are not in the state statutes, and fire reimbursement is one that our city attorney here is working on currently. In fact, it's an issue in a number of cities with collection. In fact, it's an issue in a number of cities with, with collection. So, those are just a few comments about that. Other items, the, you should have all received press releases on two different items today and one is the Saginaw Police Department swearing in police officers on May twenty-first at ten AM in council chambers. I think, I think the mayor is already planning to be there to do that and, and work with the chief. So, that's basically to fill positions for retired police officers that, that are authorized. There's quite a few that have retired in the last year and I don't think that even puts us at full staffing for police. Like we have maybe two or three positions still to be filled. And then the second one is the Franken Anderson Celebration Park and Splash Park will be opening on Saturday and that's, that's on time this year, so we're glad to get that done. Phil Carwatt and his staffs and also the water plant has been working very hard on the, the Splash Park. And also, if you get a chance to go out there, I know you have all, all recall the DNR trust fund grant that we received last year. Those improvements to the park have been made and that includes new pathways, benches, trees, the boulder climbing structures. And it will be open starting Saturday daily from ten to seven PM, ten AM to seven PM. The next citywide meeting hosted by Chief Ruth is, is going to be at Saint Stevens Association, which is, the meeting will be thirteen hundred Malzone, it's on the twenty-eighth and it's at five thirty. And then finally, I think you all have at your place setting a, say the date or an invitation for the Reinventing Saginaw Symposium. And it's a showcase of federal, state and local initiatives spurring positive change in Saginaw and the keynote, one of the keynote speakers is Congressman Kildee. He's confirmed to attend that and also involved our Saginaw Police Department, Saginaw County, Saginaw Valley State University, the Michigan State Police, Michigan State Housing Development Association, Saginaw County Land Bank, MML, Saginaw Chamber of Commerce, Saginaw County Prosecutor's Office, Neighborhood Groups and SCENIC. So, it's a way to talk about all the changes that we have made in the neighborhoods and the impact that it's had specifically on crime and quality of life issues in the neighborhoods. And I would be remiss if I didn't state that this is, this is a way of thinking outside of the box as well. This idea was brought to me by a city employee, John Stempel, had the idea to have this symposium and has been coordinating it for the past few months because there often is a lot of bad news out there and the city administration, city council and the workers have done a lot of good things and it's important to talk about those as well and the impact that it has had on the city of Saginaw. And I think we see that in crime, we do see that in number of fires as well and we see that in lots. And I think we'll probably have some more information about the property land management, as I stated last time, in the last couple of weeks. And we've got some good ideas on that coming up and we'll probably have a meeting with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and, and the county coming up after, after the holiday to, to update you on some of that. I think if you drive around and look at, especially the seeded lots with clover, I think they look pretty good and that's, that's a really good option and maybe time to use some of the dollars that are set aside for the property maintenance to do something with that. So, we'll be putting something together for that meeting and then we'll bring it back to the whole council after we meet with that group. And then we had, we do have a presentation tonight. Dennis Jordan has a few things to talk about. Normally at this point in the budget process, Beth Church gives an update on the personnel complement listed. Beth can't make it, so you got Dennis tonight. And he's gonna talk about that and also a little bit about the, the MERS and then some other questions that had come up during the day.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. While you were talking relative to the various activities that are going on, you mentioned previously in the council meeting that not able to always broadcast it. But I think it would be helpful if we could get some type of confidential briefing via email, just saying, hey, just an FYI on some projects that are going on, you know, you know, keep, keep, keep it under lids or confidential document as the city attorney provides periodically for some very important information. I think that would be very helpful, okay? Because all of us are, I mean, we've got nine cheerleaders, no point intended about the, the gender, but cheerleaders in terms of, you know, what's going on in our city. So, to, to be informed, I think is, is very impactful, okay? So, you know, that won't create any situations of breach of confidentiality based on you talking to this group and, and you know, you don't want it to leak. I understand that. You know, you want to keep things low. So, that has to be an understanding when we get those confidential briefs, that's, goes without saying, keep, keep you, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can do that with certain things. There are some things that, that I can't, but when, when I, I can look at some of the activities and, and update you on, by email on some of the things that are upcoming, some things just, the income tax meeting, I probably will, I know I had talked to the mayor about those kinds of things before, but I can maybe put something together when something like that comes up where I just send out an email to, to all the council members.
That'd be helpful. And then one more thing, similar, we used to get these years ago, when events occur in terms of homicides or significant events relative to, you know, the public, you know, being harmed or what have you, you know, we would get again another confidential communication because I think it's, it's, it's really awkward to, to, to have someone ask you, hey, did you, did you, what happened to the, you know, Joe Blow over here? You know, I, I don't know. I, I haven't, I haven't seen the news, you know? So, you know, I know things in that sense are, you know, you have to use some discretion, but there's some general information I think we can get from you to say, hey, just, just FYI, there was an event that occurred on Tenth Street at such and such, you know, a person may have been shot, something still under investigation, et cetera. You know, I mean, use your discretion, but I think being informed again of those kind of things occur is important as well. So, we used to get those in the past, you know, a couple city managers ago, I would say, but they were, they were helpful.
Yeah.
They were helpful.
Yep. Yeah, we can look at doing that. I'll talk to the chief and of course, and I know Councilman Tibbs is, knows about this.
He may be privy to some things that we are.
Certain things that we can and can't say about an incident that's being investigated, but I'll, I'll talk to Chief Ruth and see what we can do. And, you know, I remember getting those things because I got them as a deputy city manager, but that is also an impact of reducing your police force from ninety-four to fifty-five. We had more people in the detective bureau. I think we had another sergeant at the time that handled that. Because I remember I would get the same messages and almost like a standard message from the same sergeant, but with staffing, it's something that has gone by. So, I'll, I'll talk to Chief Ruth and see if there is a way where maybe we, we can do something similar to that.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I know we have an issue as far as generating revenue and the Headley Amendment and as well as the tax cap. And so, we do have to be creative in generating revenues. I, I guess what I'm asking and, because I know Mr. Hosberg, he's a busybody, somewhat like myself, but I'm just thinking out loud here. You said that the city already presently has a cost and reimbursement, reimbursement ordinance, but if I could, you know, there's always possibility to, to make some changes to it as well as, you know, maybe it's the best it can be or maybe it can get better. I know that there are several cities that has cost reimbursement or cost recovery ordinances. So, I, I just think that it may be beneficial if we could take the time to compare what the city is doing to what other cities are doing. So, maybe we can make our ordinance better because at this point, I don't want to say it isn't working, but maybe it could get better is what I'm saying. And so, if, if somehow we can get an idea of what it's done, and I know there's pushbacks to the cost recovery because yes, well, I don't want to go into much detail because I'm still looking into it. But I just think that's an educated decision that council could make whether or not they want to, want to change their ordinance. And the only way we can make educated decision is if we look at what we currently have, look at what's out there and possibly make adjustments. And maybe when it, when we do evaluate it, maybe it isn't a good call for us because our residents will push back on it, but maybe we can find, find what other municipalities are doing, see what they could correct and what we are doing now and maybe find a medium ground where we can generate some funds for the city. So, I guess a good starting point is if we can get an idea of what we're doing, how we're doing it and how much money is generated and see if we can even come up with some projected revenues. I just want to be in a position to make an educated decision on whether or not we need to make changes in that part of our ordinance.
Yeah, the city attorney is, will, will look at that. We've been, I'll tell you, we've been working with some other ones and they have other units and they're not, and not necessarily as responsive as, as we would like, but it's something that we can look at. And I, I'd also ask the city attorney to look at the state statutes of, and I know Councilman Clock is a former city attorney as well and there, there is often a discussion that says, I, I think there's two schools of thought and one is unless there's a state statute that implicitly says you can do X for cost recovery, then you cannot do that. And there's another school of thought that says it doesn't prohibit us from doing that, so we can do it. So, the city attorney is, can research that and bring it back and do, do a little bit of a comparison, but.
May, may I, Mayor? What I'm, what I'm saying is that we're volunteering, just like we did with the, the rental property. Myself, who's an attorney, Mr. Clock, who's also an attorney, we worked on that together with really no cost to the city at all. And so, basically we are offering our services again. And so, I guess what I'm asking is that if you can give us some type of starting point, we're basically giving you our service to the city. And if it, if it falls by the wayside, so be it. I'm just saying, suggesting that we can.
Yep. Oh, I understand that.
Take advantage of what's reported.
The first step to doing that is having the city attorney look at that because I can't recommend, and I know he can't recommend you do something that's not part of allowable under a state statute. So, I think the first step is to have him do that. We'll bring back that information to the entire council and then if it's, it's something that you want to work on, then I think we could go from there. Thank you, Mayor.
Question, Councilman Clock?
Mr. Manager, I'm gonna slide this in here as if I'm making a comment to you without this announcement, that the Wine and Gas Credit Union on June the sixth will be cleaning up Rush Street, the whole block. We're gonna be out there volunteering Wine and Gas Credit Union, so I wanted to let you know that. Mr. Stempel knows that, I think. And the following week, one week, one street, it'll be cleaning up the following week. So, if we can get some help, we appreciate it.
I don't mean to cut you off. Thank you for having me and we appreciate it for Wine and Gas. Under miscellaneous business.
Yeah, that would be wonderful if you would fill us in a little bit more on that. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, you should have received in your packet, and I'm sure that you did, three pages of a spreadsheet that looks similar to the one that I have up on the board. No, it's, it should have looked just like that one right up there. Should be three pages, was in the packet. Pardon? Yeah, it would have been in the packet that you received.
Yes, it's in your electronic packet and it's, no, it was. CC three, if you have a council communication room's attachment, it's part of your electronic packet, also in the bulletin sheet that you sent.
Essentially, this is finalized, finalizing the complement section of the budget. Now, when Yolanda and Matt had gone over the budget, they had discussed these changes throughout that budget process. All we're looking at now is just the personnel and the impact that it had. So, with that, you know, I know it's kind of small up there on the slide, but basically the first thing we're gonna look at is deletions to staff. There were two deletions to staff and I want you to keep in mind when you look at the deletions, I'm also gonna relate that to additions to staff. So, the first one is the Office of the City Manager Administrative Support Part-Time Clerk. We're deleting that part-time position and if you take a step down into the additions, you will see that we had actually changed that position to a full-time position. So, we deleted the part-time and turned it into a full-time position. The second deletion to staff was in the police department. We had a retiree, a retirement in the firearms and property room specialist area and with that, we reviewed the position and with input from the chief, he felt that we could better operate the firearms room with one of our police sergeants, Sergeant Mannay. And basically, what he's going to do as part of his job, because we have fewer, fewer police officers qualifying than what we used to have five years ago, we don't need a full-time person down in that, that department. So, we have a, a range qualified sergeant that is able to help qualify the, the police officers as they have to keep, continually, continually qualify. So, basically what we've done in the police department is we're eliminating that position and a portion of the firearm position is gonna be turned over to the police department, a, a, a police officer, sergeant. The other part, the property and impound specialist is actually going to, we've actually hired an individual to do that particular position. So, what you have is a, a net change from a deletions and additions of about two thousand dollars a year. So, that's kind of how we covered the deletions and the addition to staff. And this is always ongoing. We review jobs as people leave. It's an opportunity to reevaluate and see which is the best way to handle that. So, the next page is reallocations. Basically, we're taking the people that are in a position and reallocating them because of additional job responsibilities that they've been acquiring or they have acquired. And a lot of times what happens is we will have someone in the, in a position and as people through attrition or people leave, people move on, other people absorb their work, we don't always make that adjustment. We don't always make that adjustment to their wages. So, what we have, excuse me, I gotta move to the next slide. So, what we have on the, on the reallocation is the Office of Human Resource Assistant HR Director, that happens to be Beth. Her title change, she has not had a title change. What happened was about five years ago, she was promoted from a generalist to an HR Assistant HR Director because of additional responsibilities and, but, but there was never pay, any pay increase with that. So, we're making an adjustment to her pay of two thousand dollars a year on that. The Office of Management and Budget, that is, that is a change we've already made. Basically, Yolanda Jones is taking over additional responsibilities in CBDG, SEDC, Economic Development, some of those areas, she's taken over additional responsibilities supervising those programs. And so that change is going, is actually, we've made that change already. Inspections, inspections are Plumbing and Mechanical Inspector, because of additional duties and responsibilities that John has taken on, additional duties and responsibilities with regard to code enforcement. What we're doing is we're taking one of the employees, our Plumbing and Mechanical Inspector, he's going to continue to do those duties, plus he's going to be responsible for code enforcement and some of our parking enforcement. So he's taking on additional responsibilities, so we're basically promoting him to the Deputy Chief Inspector. We're not going to replace a Plumbing and Mechanical Inspector, we're promoting that person, and there's a net adjustment in his pay of $5,697. In addition to that, we also have two code enforcement inspectors, and right now, they're doing the same duty. One of them is at a A-26, and basically, what we're doing with that is moving the other code enforcement inspector who's doing the same duties up to that same level of pay. And that's an additional $2,255 a year. So the total reallocations is $13,978. And then there are two other title changes that we're making. There's no monetary change as far as a wage impact, and that's the SEDC Loan Specialist. We're changing that job title to an Economic Development Coordinator. And at the Police Department, we had a Public Safety Support Specialist, and that is basically, the position is now focused in the Police Department. It was Police and Fire, and we're re-titling it to a Support Service Specialist. And those are the changes that we've made. The third page, you can see the net difference was deletions. We deleted 1.8 full-time equivalents. Our additions are 2.0 for net adjustment of .20. And that equates to a $15,679 a year cost impact to the city.
Okay, Councilman Floyd Clock.
Is you, I'm back to the additions to staff under Police. Was there an impound specialist previously, or?
It wasn't in the job title, but we had that firearms and range position. Basically, those were duties that that person was also handling.
So when you had it as before, under firearms and property, it really would have included impound at that time?
It would have, yes. It wasn't in the job title.
All right, thank you.
The Deputy Chief Inspector. So this person was doing the job, and now you're giving him a title, or how is that working again?
No, basically, what's happening with that one is the, he was a Plumbing and Mechanical Inspector, he's going to continue to do those duties, but he's taken on additional duties regarding code enforcement and parking enforcement.
Who was doing the code enforcement and parking enforcement before?
Those are responsibilities that Mr. Stimple's doing.
Showing up in this budget year, but what you're not seeing is elimination of the Development Director position, which was probably about $75,000 to $80,000. That was extra supervision for the Inspections Division. So in lieu of that position, John Stimple has been doing all of the supervision, similar to what a department head was. He's not a department head. So some relief there is to create a Deputy Chief Inspector, which doesn't cost a whole lot of money compared to a Development Director. So when John is not there, that is a person who fills in and can also take on some of the other responsibilities. In addition to eliminating the Development Director last year, or maybe that was, yeah, that was in the last budget year, we also moved additional services to inspections that did include parking enforcement, it used to be a part of Public Works, environmental, cleanup was a part of Public Works, and I think those are the two biggest ones that we moved to that department. So that, or that division has grown quite a bit over the last few years without, and lost the department head that was over that. So right now, John Stimple is a division head and reports to the City Manager. So there've been a lot of changes in that area, and this is, I think, something that we need to do for when John's not here or working somewhere else, that gives some supervision to the department.
So we got rid of one job, the director, right? But we contracted that job out, didn't we?
Yes.
To Mr. Miller?
Not Mr. Miller, Saginaw Future.
To Saginaw Future?
Yes.
Mr. Miller does that job. So what I'm saying is, did we create any gap in wages, or are we expanding the department because of the money that we're putting out, or are we subtracting money?
You're still subtracting money. If you go over what the positions I listed, if you recall, when Saginaw Future took over more activities, what we really did is put them back up to what their contract was with the city. One time, we basically, somewhat, you know, we weren't paying what our contract said we would pay. So we increased that, and at the time to increase that, they took on more work. Now, the difference in their contract and what we were actually paying them, I think, was about $40,000, $38,000, something like that. We cut a department head-level position, which was the Development Director, which is, like I said, somewhere from $80,000, $85,000. So then you still have the net savings there of another $40,000, so about $45,000. Now, we're paying a deputy director maybe $5,000 more. You still have a net savings, and what it also does is you are seeing in this budget far more revenue from parking enforcement than you had ever seen in the past, because the Department of Public Works is so large, that's something that John and his staff really focus on, is enforcement and collection of those parking tickets. So that's, you're seeing, you're still seeing a net saving on the reductions in staff, and you're also seeing increases in parking enforcement revenue.
Well, I'm just concerned, because sometime I look at Saginaw Future, it doesn't, it's Saginaw County Future, Saginaw Bay County Future to me, because they work on all these different projects, and I'm trying to see how we get, you know, our bang for the buck. You know, whenever we have a company that comes here and applies for a tax break, and then the next thing you know, that same company moves out in Thomas Township, you know, free land that the Saginaw Future has provided for them, then it seems like it's, you know, they're working against each other, or working against us to a certain extent, because now we don't have this tax revenue in the city, because that business went out here after we gave them a tax break. You know, so as a councilperson, and as a person that represents other people who's paying taxes in this city, those things concern me. And people are taking a look at that, people who I know who ask me about these things. So I want us to take a look at it, too, so we can take a look at those things, because I don't want us to get into conflict where people are controlling us and taking our tax dollars out of here. We started complaining about our tax base, and then the tax base leaving to a company that's supplying the land. It doesn't, that don't add up to me.
Yeah.
It doesn't add up. So as being the City Manager, I would hope that you would take a better look at that and to make sure those types of incidents, if you can, don't happen again, because it really hurts the city.
Well, and I'm sure you're talking about one specific, or generally, in general, the contract with Saginaw Future. They don't do any work in Bay County. But one incident that I think you're talking about with a company purchasing, the mayor and I did meet with the president of that company prior to that move, and there was a pretty serious discussion about the city's commitment to that company, as well as the company's commitment to the city. But important to note, too, though, and I think we can bring that back, and we can bring Saginaw Future back to talk about it, it's not fair to just talk about some of the things that moved. I think you also have to recognize all of the projects in the city that they're doing that are bringing jobs in, which I think is something that we wouldn't have with an in-house director, and I don't think we did have that in the past.
Well, I can only talk about the things that I can see affecting the city. It would almost be like me saying that, by me being a big brother, I saved one guy from not being in the crime for the amount of time that he spent with me. So I can talk about that, but if I'm not spending any time with him, I don't know if he did crime or not. So I can only talk about the situation that's happening right now, today, as far as this city's concerned, as we've been on City Council. If I see this happening, then I think I should say something about it. And it's concerning to me. It's concerning me a lot. So I think that we need to be more astute on situations like that. It's only one, but that's the tax bases leaving the city.
Oh, sure, yeah. And I think it's important to look at that, but then you also can't ignore the fact that Saginaw Future was, did a lot of major work on bringing Central Michigan University Campus to Saginaw, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of a probably $40 million to $50 million investment, several jobs. So I think that's what we need to maybe bring back, is a balance there to let you know, it's similar to what the Mayor Protem was saying, give you a summary of the positive things, as well as things that you might see or hear from other people.
Well, that's the first time I heard someone say that they brought Central Michigan here. I thought it's collaborative effort with Delta College and the City Council, and the fact that we have hospitals here. I mean, they didn't have to bring them here, and we already got hospitals here. They know where they wanted to come before they got here. They wanted to come to a place we got hospitals.
Well, I didn't say they.
Well, I'm just saying, you said they brought them here, I think that's what you said.
I said they worked on the project to bring them here, which they did. And there was a lot of work that goes into a project like that. So there were a lot of people that worked on that, but they did represent the city in that project.
I understand that, but when we got something already here, and people want what we got, then they're going to come. That's how I feel. Just like if somebody built an industrial park in another county or another city, there's a place that they can go. I'm not going to court them to go there, and they're working for us, too. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
And I'm going to add in, let's be very careful. That company is still here, they still have million-dollar investments here. Let's not, let's be very careful with this, Councilman Ballz, because I do not want that person to come up to this counter and say, "Thank you very much," but you know what? We're going to take the whole rest of this and leave. I don't want that to happen. They were, we did not have anything that would fit what they needed at the time, but I think we're getting off the point here. We're talking about this up here, and I want to stay with this, Dennis', Mr. Jordan's presentation. So please, let's stay on this.
Mr. Mayor, that's fine and dandy, but I'm not going to ask you. If I'm talking to the City Manager, I don't need you to come back and tell me nothing that I'm talking to him about. If he gave me an answer, that's fine and dandy with me, and I'll let that be it. But you're not going to come back and tell me something I asked him. So if we're going to go back and forth, we'll go back and forth. It doesn't matter.
Well, it does matter. It does matter.
If it wouldn't have mattered, he would have told me that when I asked him the question.
He's just being courteous. Councilman Brendan Moore.
About what you said, I had like a brain freeze, and so I need to clarify. On the Office of City Manager, you said that we're going to hire an administrative clerk part-time.
That position, I'll move back, is, on that position, basically, we're turning that position into a full-time position, from a part-time 28-hour-a-week position to a 40-hour-a-week position. So we have to eliminate or delete that position, and then we added a full-time position. So they kind of work together on that.
Okay, so the new position, is that an additional 22, or is that the salary base?
No, the, what it is, is the additional, where are we at here, for the Office Manager? We're eliminating, that part-time position was $22,000 a year, and to be a full-time position, it's going to be $28,000, it's about a $6,000 difference in wages.
Okay. Well, I'm asking because your figures didn't say that, so that's why I ask. So the same thing, okay, how about the police support via a property specialist? Clarification, are we adding this to the salary? Did you delete the position? I heard you say, or may have mentioned that you're going to get somebody already doing it. Are they going to give additional $39,000, or is this?
It'll delete, because of the position, we're deleting that position as it is, as a firearm or property specialist, that's a deletion of $39,000, and we're going to create a new position that is strictly property, an impound, which is 35, so it's a net savings of right around $4,000 on that.
And so a property, so the property impound specialist will take over the firearms or property, or incorporate it all together?
Yeah, the firearms part of it, the firing range.
Right.
That piece is going to be handled by a police officer. And so we're not going to increase his pay, it's going to be part of his job, and he's going to be able to manage that, because we have fewer people, he's going to be on shift, we don't need a civilian to do that, because it was a civilian's position, the firearm and the range, the firing range, was a civilian position, and now that piece of it is going to be handled by a police officer.
Okay, so, once again, this position is a person, brand-new person, and we're going to pay them $35,000?
Yes, they're going to be doing three-quarters of the work of the job that we just eliminated.
Up here?
Yes, the job that we're deleting, firearms and property.
Right.
That new job is going to be doing three-quarters of that job. The small piece of the firearms is going to be handled by a police officer. So we're basically going to do this job for less money, about $4,000 less.
Okay, I'm thinking, I thought that we were going to give this to somebody and add this to their salary already, okay. Okay, so now, over here on the supports, I'm sorry, Nick, can I? On the support, the support service specialist, okay. Up here, when we go up here, it says $0 in wage impact for the public safety support specialist?
Yes, that's just a title change, because it's in the complement, it's in your budget complement, we've changed the title, so we have to let you know about the, whenever we change the title of a position. And that's what those two positions on the last one, the SEDC Loan Support is changed to an Economic Development Coordinator, there's no wage impact, it's just a title change.
So we have right now, I know we had SED, because I know.
Yes.
The public safety support person, we've got one of them already?
Yes. It was called the Public Safety Support Specialist, and we're just changing that person's title to Support Service Specialist.
Okay, okay.
Because we don't have a public safety department, so to speak, anymore. We had Police and Fire underneath the public safety, now we just have the Police and Fire, we separated those.
Now, I remember a meeting we had, and we talked about this, property, and what this, where we talked about empowerment, or was it something else that we talked about? So, never mind, never mind, never mind, never mind, I get the thought together. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jordan. Any other questions for Mr. Jordan? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that, Councilman Moore, I think we were talking, I think the chief was up speaking at one time, where we were talking about the empowerment person, that there was a collaboration between Saginaw and Saginaw Township, but that position was not operational at the time. I believe there was a person that, no, maybe it was stolen vehicles, I think it was something to that effect.
A change in this budget, too, but it's not a personnel change. We have, we used to have an auto theft.
Auto theft.
Auto Theft Prevention Authority, ATPA grant, and it's not highlighted in this analysis that Mr. Jordan's providing, because it's not an actual change to employee, but that grant, being a part of that grant at this time actually cost us more than having our own investigator. So we're coming back from that grant, pulling back from that grant. grant, and it saves, I think, about thirty, thirty-eight thousand dollars a year, and it will allow us more, a little bit more autonomy in what type of investigations we do. That grant, if you get that grant, it locks you into, all you can do is auto theft investigations countywide. So it's not even just in the city, and it ends up costing us more than having an investigator that works just in the city on any case we want. So Chief and Yolanda and I worked on that, and that, that's a savings, but it's not a change in the complement. It just brings the officer back, back into the Investigations Bureau. But yep, that's, that's in this budget too.
So, 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 Mr. Manager, is that activity absorbed in the inspections Department? Where is that activity absorbed at?
That's a police department.
That's absorbed in the police department?
Yep. If, the auto theft grant is a statewide grant that, but if you're a part of it, it has a certain restriction. So it's, it's a city detective that works countywide-
Okay.
-right now, because we accept that grant. So the change that we're proposing in this budget would not have that grant, saves money and puts an investigator in the Detective Bureau that can do whatever assignments need to be done. So he could still do auto theft investigation in the city, and also work on some of these other violent crimes, or property crime, or whatever the chief would assign him to. It would just be another investigator.
Not restricted to just solely-
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Now, we, we could, like, we talked about some living document, we're working on some things to say, hey, if we are part of this grant, can we do things differently? Because we need this detective in the city more, so we'll see what the state says. The state usually isn't real flexible and stuff like that, so my thought is, we probably will keep it the way it is. But just in the spirit of working with other local units and cooperating, we're, we're asking the questions.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jordan, thank you very much. We did get this electronically, but if you'll see Andy Bench and I going like this, it's because we can't turn that. It's, so we're kinda, okay. So, just FYI, that come through sideways.
Old school, good way to go.
You know what? And we're referring, we're, we're both kinda peeking over here and looking at this one copy here. So the old school one out on that one, I tell you, you got it. Appreciate that, Mr. Jordan.
Well, not a problem. And I think, I think in the future, you know, there's an item on the agenda that'll really help, help you with these presentations out. So, and I'll leave that, I'll leave that for Mr. Klopsak. The next item, I know it's not, it's not on the agenda, and the city manager talked about it. Last, last meeting, we talked about the MERS transition, or the police and fire transition to MERS. One of the things that we had done is put together a presentation last year right about this time, an unfunded liability, and pretty much covered most of the unfunded liability, got into, you know, some of the options we could, how we were gonna handle, how we have handled it, and how we're going to handle it in the future. And I know the city manager res sent that out last week, so those of you that didn't get to see that presentation, that was, that was out there, if you have any questions over that, I'd be glad to, to answer them. But what I wanted to do today is to, because of some of the questions, I wanted to add some additional information regarding MERS and the benefits of transitioning onto MERS. So I did just a short presentation, and I'd like to run through that with you right now. The, the benefits of moving to MERS, and again, you, we've introduced the ordinance, and what you'll also see in front of you tonight is an introduction of that same ordinance. However, there's a small modification that we made to that ordinance, and those were sent out electronically, and then I believe they were also put in front of you tonight. Yeah, along with the presentation. But the ordinance had, and there's a council communication, the ordinance had a minor change to it from what we had initially introduced. But this is all part of that, that ordinance change, and the adoption agreements that you agreed, or you approved last week. But I wanted to just kinda talk to you a little bit about the benefits of moving to MERS. And I, I know we've covered some of this, but I, I kinda put it on, on a couple slides. We have the full-time professional money managers, that's what MERS has. We have our police and pension board, don't get me wrong. They have money managers, they have consultants that help them. But when you look at, this is what these people do, you know, all day long, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That's, that's what those folks do. And so we felt that the benefit, one of the benefits with the professional money managers going with MERS, we provide payment to retirees, payroll to all retirees. Right now, we cut checks every two weeks, four hundred and twenty retirees, we're running the payrolls, we're on the W2s. If there's any payroll changes, administrative changes, has to do with tax changes, they're getting a hold of us, we're doing all that internally, and MERS will do all of that for us. So we're not cutting the checks, we don't have the, the paper stock, the cost of doing it, and the time it takes to process those payroll for those four hundred and some retirees. We have a complete, excuse me, MERS has a complete, we have to complete all estimates and final benefit calculations, that's what we're doing now. When you think about, right now, we have about sixty actives. A year ago, we probably had seventy, seventy-five actives, before that, we had ninety. Well, when people get close to retirement, they start calling up human resources, calling up Beth, saying, hey, I want, I'm thinking about going next year in April, I'm thinking about going September. And so she'll go through and do the, all these calculations, get them to the person, and they'll look at them, then they'll come back and say, well, why don't you move that up another month, I'm gonna work another two months, and things have changed. So there's a constant doing all these benefit calculations, and they're only estimates. And then once they actually decide, I picked a date, then they do the final calculation, and then that is submitted to for a, a final validation to Gabriel Roder, who's our actuary, and they confirm that. They charge us for it, but they also validate to make sure that those numbers are correct. So it's additional cost, those will, that will all be going to MERS. So we won't have to do that part anymore. Customer service support, we have one person. And if Beth is gone, or Beth is tied up doing interviews and not available, we have four hundred and some retirees, and it's sixty actives, and they got one person that they can go to. And so by having the customer service support at MERS, they'll be able to call an eight-hundred number or go online and get any of their questions answered, make any plan, or any changes, if they wanna change their beneficiary or the tax status. They can, they can just call any eight-hundred number. They've got, and they have a redundant system. In other words, they got a lot of, they have a lot of people in their call center that will be able to answer all those questions that the retirees have. Something we don't issue is quarterly benefit statements. They'll get quarterly benefit statements, not only, not only the active, so they'll know what they have, but also the retirees, they can see what benefit payments they've been receiving. And, you know, along with that, they'll, again, they'll also get their, their tax information, they'll be processing it, and we won't have to do that here. Legal and plan document, document compliance, right now, we hire a legal attorney. We're paying this legal attorney to do all the, the legal work for this pension board. In addition, and that's in addition to the city attorney. Because the city attorney used to sit on the, on the police and pension board, but the police and fire pension board felt they wanted their own attorney. So they hired another attorney. So we got two attorneys on the police and fire pension board. This is gonna get rid of that redundancy, we're not gonna have to do that. In addition, they have their own plan compliance department, their own legal department, so our plans will always be in compliance. Medical review, providers for disability pensions, right now, if someone comes in and applies, we have to send them for an independent medical evaluation, we have to pay for that medical evaluation, we coordinate that. They bring all that medical stuff to the board that sets up there, and the five-person board reviews all that medical and decides whether or not that person's disabled or not, based on the medical information. So we're outsourcing that, and we won't have to. I mean, there's privacy issues, there's, you know, compliance issues, there's people reviewing medical information. That's gonna take that out of our hands. An actuary, we hire an actuary that we have to have for this police and fire pension board. In the package at MERS, they have their own actuary, it's not gonna be an ad hoc cost like we're doing right now. Probably one of the biggest areas is the fiduciary responsibility. Both the city and the trustees on that board have a legal obligation to represent their members, and if they make a mistake, or do something they shouldn't, or if it creates a conflict, this is one piece that the city and the Board of Trustees are not gonna have to be worried about, the fiduciary responsibility. It all goes over to MERS. And, you know, the last note is, they've got, they've been doing this for sixty-five years, so, you know, they've got a pretty good handle on what they're doing. Why MERS? We're very comfortable with MERS. They've been managing all our non-public safety retirement plans and other benefits. They handle the non-public safety defined benefit retirement system, so we're, we've already been using them for years. They handle the defined contribution plan, it was a new plan we put in place in two thousand. We put in a new hybrid plan for the police officers, this past contract, for the patrol officers. It's a new plan, and they're administering that. In nineteen ninety-nine, we put in a healthcare savings plan, so that all new hires after nineteen ninety-nine are not eligible for retiree healthcare. What they get instead is like a savings plan, we put so much money per pay into a savings plan for them. And MERS manages that, it manages the investments associated with that. MERS has over two thousand plans that they represent with, with over eight hundred Michigan municipal members. So they, their focus is all in Michigan, and it's all municipal type of employers. And they have over nine point three-one billion dollars in assets, and that continues to grow. And that's compared to our current pension system of a hundred and twenty million, which is a lot of money, but that's a lot more. And with that, they're able to negotiate better fees, management fees, as well as being able to do things that our pension system isn't able to do as far as investments.
This is strictly police. Firefighters didn't buy in, or they did?
This is strictly the patrol and command, you just approved the command contract to move. The firefighters have not, at this point in time. We are in, we have been in discussion regarding this, and in fact, we have a meeting tomorrow. So we've been in constant discussion about this. And it would be our position to work something out with them as well.
I've just seen firefighters, and I was curious.
The next piece is, MERS did do a comparison, and we talked about this, we did have this in one of our offsites, when they showed us that comparison, it was an offsite, and that was two years ago, and I know, some of you remember this piece, but nine out of ten years of the comparison, what they did is they took the assets, if, what our assets looked like in two thousand, and what did they look like in two thousand and ten. And so they did the ten-year comparison, what would those assets have grown had we put them in with MERS rather than keep them with the police and fire pension. And it was like a forty million dollar investment difference. You know, on average, about four million dollars a year difference in investment returns. It's just a little bit, a little bit of return difference. It might be a one and a half, two percent difference, but when you're talking, you know, one point two million dollars, that does make a difference. And then that, that has an impact on our required annual contribution. We call it an ARC, and that's what we pay into the, to MERS, or we have to contribute that for the police and fire pension system. It's just our contribution, they'll take a look at your assets, they'll take a look at your liability, they'll take a look at all these assumptions, and everybody that's in the plan, and they look, they do that valuation, and they come back and say, in order to keep this going for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, or two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, this is what you're gonna have to pay into the system. So, but it's gonna improve that, in other words, lower that dollar amount that we have to put in there.
MERS did that comparison today, compared the two plans, theirs and ours, with regard to how successful each was in meeting their projections.
They compared, they compared just the assets at the time the plan would have been in there, and at their rate of return, that's, that's what they looked at, is just the assets.
They did it in actual, not on, not saying, you know, this year, we hope to do this good, MERS does, hopes to do this good, and the police and fire hopes to do this good and see how-
It would've been actual numbers, 'cause they know what those return, that's why they go in hindsight's twenty twenty, they were able to go back ten years, and they were able to figure out exactly, that's what it would've been, based on those assets.
But I guess I'm trying to find out, did MERS meet its projections each of the last ten years that we're talking about, and did the police and fire pension system meet its projections?
I would have to look at year by year to take a look, because there is an assumption of, the MERS, I believe their rate of return, investment rate of return is eight percent, and I believe the police and fire pension system is either seven or seven and a half. And just based on that nine out of the last, out of those ten, out of that time period, MERS did do better than the police and fire pension system. I don't know if they over, they did more than what their, what their rate of return assumption was.
Yeah, for example, if MERS for the average for the last ten years thought they'd do ten percent, but only did eight-
Right.
And the police and fire pension system thought they'd do ten and did twelve, have we made those comparisons to see it?
Those, those are, you can go back and look, you know, you can go back and look at that. But I can tell you that the, they don't adjust those rates every year. Those assumed rates for return are pretty much fixed. It would take a board to change those, a board action to change them, they don't usually change those. I can pretty much tell you that ours have been at seven percent. I can guarantee you that the police and fire pension board did not exceed their seven percent rate of return in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, nor did MERS. Those are down years for them.
All right. So whether or not they exceeded isn't the issue for our purposes, it's whether or not they did better net.
When they did the presentation, their average rate of return had been, and I'm not sure what the timeframe was, I think it might've been over that ten-year period of time, but it has historically, it has averaged nine percent a year.
You're looking at, you're comparing which one had the greater rate of return over that period of time.
Regardless of projection.
Correct, correct.
That's sort of what I was trying to figure out.
Yep. That's what we're, that's what they're looking at, and they didn't even take a look at which one outperformed. Neither of them probably over the ten years, I would guess significantly exceeded either of their projections, which is, is, both are fairly good returns. But I think moving forward, even going back ten years, MERS has been building, because they've gotten a lot more communities, and obviously, in my opinion, the more assets you have under management, the better opportunity you have, have to get a greater return, of course, based upon what your investment management philosophy is.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Something MERS has, has, they actually have an in-house training, education and training for their, for their members and the participants in the plan. And that's, doesn't matter if it's for a 401A plan, the, or 401K, the 457, the healthcare savings plan, the hybrid plan, any of those, as well as a DB plan, they have in-house people, that's what they do. And they come in, and they don't charge us, they come in and do that training. We don't have the staff to do that. So that's another big piece, big piece. When you talk about people planning for retirement, and we've got these people that can come in and sit down with them, and talk about their specific accounts, and where they're at and what they need to do. Police and fire active, defined pension personnel are shrinking. We currently have about sixty, well, we, as of the last valuation, we have sixty-three active, police and fire. With the police out of it, you're down to about twenty-nine fire. That's what you're gonna have in your plan. And there's four hundred and seventeen retirees. So that board consists of, prior to police moving, a member, an active member from police and the one from fire. So eventually, you know, those twenty-nine people probably- So, eventually, you know, those 29 people probably within the next seven to 10 years are going to be gone. So, there's not even going to be a representative to be able to put on the board. So, that's, you know, unless there was some amendment or to the ordinance for that. But, so that's, that's kind of, that's kind of an issue. It's a very critical issue that there, there no longer will be active police officers or firefighters on that particular board.
Mr. Jordan, is it, and maybe it might be the city manager to have to answer this. Is that an ordinance change?
Yes.
Or would that be a charter change to, to change the representative?
It's an ordinance.
Just ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you could change it and say, okay, let's have a retired firefighter or retired police officer. But, then again, you know, as they progressively get older, you know, do they really want to come in from their vacation spot and sit on the board?
They're going to be doing a lot of things for us that we normally, that we used to have to do, right?
Correct.
So, that's going to save us a lot of time in your department.
It's, it, that's, that's exactly, that's exactly, I have one person that's managing that, plus doing all the recruiting, so.
So, how much compliment would that take down in your department from not, not have to do?
I don't see it at this point in time taking my compliment down. But, you're probably talking about $40,000 a year. This is what we allocate to that position. I think Yolanda might have a better handle. It's like 45% of her wage right now. It's, it may not be that. That would include benefits and everything.
So, $45,000 we probably would save. That would probably be one employee, wouldn't it?
No, $45,000 is part of that. What's happened over the time? I know it sounds good. And I'm not saying, I will look at it. Maybe when that person retires, we may be in a position. It's going to take a good year to get all this done. And there's still going to be some activity on our part that we have to feed, we still have to feed MERS some information. Because they, I mean, the payroll information, there are certain nuances about the plan.
You still have to do all of that for a fire pensioner.
So, right now with the fire, it's not changing.
Yeah, but that's, for the fire department, you've got so many people and for the police, you've got so many. So, eventually, when another year and a half, two years, you probably could see a lot of savings in that department.
Potentially, there could be. But, you know, you have to understand, you know, a lot of things have, a lot of things have happened. For example, basically what Beth was doing is she was doing recruiting. And when the person left that was doing the police and fire pension board, she absorbed that. All of a sudden, she's got two people's job. So, right now, she's doing two people's job. When, when, when I hired in seven years ago, another example, we had a labor relations person. That person left, I absorbed that job. So, now all of a sudden, rather than having a, say, if our jobs were set up equally at 100%, you know, we're probably 150 to almost 200% each of us. And it has an impact on the quality of the work that you're able to get done. It's, it has an impact on how long it takes to fill a position. The longer you have a position open in the city, the longer Chief Van Lou and Chief Ruth takes, they have to have people work overtime because of vacancies in their position. Same thing with Mr. Carwatt. So, it kind of takes away from some of the, you know, some of the services and how well you can do that. So, we're going to take a look at that. We'll assess the jobs every year, absolutely. Thank you.
I have a question. So, you see it out of this, 29 of firefighters, so that leaves 44 that are police officers that are still actively working.
I think it's 34.
Under that whole contract.
It's 34, yes.
Okay, 34, my math, that's good.
That's all right.
34. So, out of the retirees, is there a bigger, I guess, is there a bigger number of retired police officers or firefighters? Because you're saying it's 417 retirees.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look at that. I don't remember what the breakout, you know, I know it's not 50/50. It might be.
Probably pretty similar to the asset, so police in the asset are about 57% with the two unions, 57, 58% total. I mean, that's probably a good idea about the breakdown. It's close. But, that's two police unions and one fire union.
So, anybody that comes in, came in after 1999, they're not, they're not in none of this?
Correct.
Okay, so they have their own separate retirement plan and we're managing that?
It's, MERS is managing it. It's a defined contribution plan. In other words, it's like a 401K. We call it in the government sector, 401A.
So, right now, MERS basically has all of our retirement packages?
After June 1st, they'll have everyone except for firefighters, yes.
But the firefighters.
Correct.
Okay. So, if we're nice to the firefighters, they might come aboard too, right? If we give them back their 40%.
I'm being really, I'm being really nice to them.
If we give them back their 40%, I'm trying to negotiate now. I'm trying to get some money. I'm trying to get, sorry. But, I'm saying, so right now, the only person that we have that's not on board with us is the firefighters.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I mean, hey, somebody got to ask the hard question. I might as well hit it.
And I'm just going to kind of summarize this and just say, you know, the current police and fire pension system, when it was started, and I think Councilman Clark alluded to this last week, you know, when it started, after it was introduced as an ordinance many years ago, I think it was a great, great idea, great concept. There's a lot of companies that have their own pension boards. A lot of municipalities did. But, now that there are so many full-time retirement programs that can provide a lot more service, sort of at, at the same or lower cost, you know, I think that it just, it's a better model to move to that type of a system. MERS does it all with minimum, minimal city resources. So, when we get everybody moved, there'll be minimal resource. We'll still have to expend some, there's still going to have to be some things that we have to do like we do right now. But, it will cut a lot of this other stuff that I talked about, the payroll processing, the benefit calculations and things like that. Anyhow, MERS, we just felt provides a better model. And with that, I know we talked, that presentation that the city manager sent out talked about this, but this is, this really hasn't changed at all since we talked about this a year ago, that unfunded liability for the police and fire pension system. The unfunded part, the part that we owe is about 71 million, about 76 for the non-public safety pension system. And the retiree health is at about 122 million. So, we're still having a, in debt to pay into those systems about $270 million. And we're working on it. And this is one thing that we're trying to do that hope to have an impact, just, just one of them. And we've done other things in that presentation. I kind of covered a history of some of those other things that I've done. We've done, not me. It wasn't me, but who's calling?
Remember, I talked so much about unfunded liability, I know so. But, remember, we had a young man that came here. What did we decide to do with that company? That we had, that we invested, but we stopped investing? What did we decide? Is he still, is he coming back to us again? What are we doing?
That's, we talked about that last week. So, with that, yeah, with the, we, again, as you see, we're having this budget elimination of firefighters. We don't have the funding available to pay for those life insurance policies.
Right.
That we had there. So, what we're going to do is take the cash value in those policies before it all runs out and transfer that to the AXA investment account that we have with them, because there's two parts to that.
Okay.
We have a savings and an investment account and a life insurance. We're just continually watching those life insurance policies expire before they pay out because we, we don't have the money to put into funding them anymore. So, it takes away from the cash value. So, it's probably the most fiduciary prudent thing to do at this time, to move it over to the investment account. When we do that, what we'll want to do is get from him a recommendation on any changes in the investments that, and kind of a prospectus to tell us what he would recommend for investing the money to see what kind of return we can get. And it's probably prudent at that time too, to maybe get some other presentations for that as well from some other companies, whether it be First Merit or different companies that might do that too and look at that. And either we can have presentations or I can bring that information back to council and you can have a couple of different options of who you want to invest with. What we'll probably want to do is look at the return that, that we've had with AXA on that investment account. And kind of the same thing that Dennis Jordan was talking about, what kind of return have they had over the life of it and what kind of other funds could we have been in and kind of do a comparison there.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we just didn't.
Yeah, we didn't forget about it.
Yes, I don't want us to forget about that because we made money. We did make some, not a lot, but we made some.
Yeah, we, we had a couple payouts, but I think.
Right, we had a couple payouts. Okay. Thank you.
That was a great presentation.
That's a joy.
The question, why MERS is a better model? And then the areas, you pointed out several areas of benefits, terms of the quality benefit statements that we were not providing with, right? The medical review for disability, the actuary, the fiduciary, and then, then the pension plan administrator experience, I think that goes a long way. And then the training, I think that's a very important tool that will benefit all the retirees and the existing employee base. So, great benefit, great job. I appreciate the information.
You're welcome.
Very much. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's the, that concludes the management update for this evening.
Madam Clerk?
Mayor, your next order of business is the consent agenda.
And the agenda has been available at City Hall on the city's web page, website, and on SGTV Channel 191. Need a motion to adopt the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
I'm there.
Moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Councilman Tibbs?
Four.
Only four. Is there any other exceptions? Any other exceptions? Being none, oh, Councilman Tibbs, you're welcome to have more than one.
Thank you.
Four, six, and seven. Okay, any others? Any others? Councilman Tibbs has had a exception on four, six, and seven. Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Our first exception is item number four, approve a purchase order to CPSHR Consulting for $2,851.75 for 180 entry-level firefighter examinations administered by Human Resources. And that was Councilman Tibbs.
Yeah, I guess I'm just not going to, being around the bush here, I guess I don't have enough information to support this particular item. I guess the reason why I'm saying that is that from the council, or excuse me, from the communication I was giving it to us, this company has been providing tests to our police and fire for, for many years. And I know that there has been, I don't know if the word criticism is the word, but there's been some pushback as to how these tests are administered to people that apply to fire and police. And for all I know, this particular company could be the gold standard to administer tests. But, so was ACT and ACT for a college entry test, but they eventually made changes to those tests. So, I mean, for the most part, I mean, I trust our, our staff and I have respect in them and I, you know, approve most if not all what they put before us. But, in assistance, I just think it's, represent more of the same. And I guess I'll be voting no. And I guess I move to put this, put number four to vote.
Okay, move for, move for adoption?
Yes.
Okay. And been moved and support. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I would, if I may.
Sure.
I guess, Mr. Manager, there's something that we will be able to get a quick update on right now.
And I don't have the exact date when they started. There was, years ago, they used to use some tests through MML. MML does not provide testing anymore for public safety, police, or fire. So, we've gone out to national test providers. There are several test providers out there, national. We have used this particular test provider, you know, over the last, at least last 10 years. And I don't, I guess as I look at it, they have to be, any test provider that we use, they have to be what they call, you have to be able to validate, they have to have a validation, which simply means that they have to, they have to prove the test for, basically if there's any discrimination, any type of test that would create any kind of issues as far as that goes. All the test providers out there, they provide pretty much the same thing. You might be able to pick and choose a couple of different categories, but they basically test four different categories. One of them is, is reading and comprehension, comprehension. Another is mathematics. Another one is mechanical aptitude. And the third one, we actually changed it this year on that particular test. And we're using an area, excuse me, called, I didn't have it with me, I didn't bring it in here. It has to do with community involvement, community living. It's more, more based towards working in, within the community. And so, we added that section to it. It's a little bit more general, a little bit more broad. And we felt it was more fitting. We wanted to get a handle of those. We had, in this testing, we had 300, this year, we had 300, 308 candidates that applied for the firefighter test. We do this every two years, every two years. 308, out of those 308, 173 of them showed up for the test. So, they all were invited. They all received a study guide. It's called, and I can pass this around, you can't have it because the company is funny about that. But, I could, I could get a copy if you wanted to see it. But, basically, it's a study guide. And the job opened up, they had them for two months. They had up to two months. Either we mailed it to them or they came and picked them up. And it's a study guide over the, all the areas that we just, that I just described. And so, they have an opportunity to study. But, out of 308, only 173 showed up. Out of those 173, 40 passed. Okay, does that mean it's, the math is too hard? Does that mean the reading comprehension is too hard, the mechanical area? I don't think that it is. I think it's some pretty basic, I think that if you were to grab a test of these national exams across the board, you would find that they're very, very similar. But, 40 passed. So, we sent out invites for interviews for those 40. And 33 of them showed up for the interviews. So, we had seven that didn't even show up. They passed a test, they didn't show up. So, right now, the 1st of June, we're doing the physical agility test across the street. Trying to get my bearings back here, where they go up the tower and they pull the hoses and they do a whole bunch of firefighter exercises. We're doing that with those 38. But, we've already taken the test. I mean, we've already paid for the test. The reason we bring it to you after we bought it is because we don't know how many tests we're going to use. We bought, we purchased 300 because that's how many applied. Only 173 showed up. So, we were able to send some of those tests back. So, we wait to find out how many people show up so we know what our invoice is actually going to look like. So, that's, that's why we're bringing it to you now. But, I mean, I'm comfortable with the test. I don't see anything wrong with it. If, if someone feels, you know, if, if it's a wish of counsel, we can certainly interview or get some proposals from some of these other vendors out there, you know, and then the next time, try it just to see what the results are. What's really funny is this same test, the pass ratio was 23, this pass ratio this time was 23% of those that took the test. It was 20%. It was 20% a lot, two years ago. Two years before that, it was 39%, and two years prior to that, it was 47%. So, I don't know, it's the same test, very similar, why there's more people failing today than there was, I don't know.
And there, I think there's a lot of criticism of standardized tests of, for any kind, but we need a way to determine the next step. So, at this point, you have to have a standardized test of some kind to be able to get to the next step, which is the interview process. I believe what Dennis is saying is that they probably are pretty similar, so, but it's something we can look at and see, is there any other tests out there for the next time? And I'm sure Chief Van Lu can explore that a little bit more, too, in the future, if that's something that we want to look at.
I mentioned validation, I assume the validation is up to the national level?
Yes, they have a, I'll just kind of give you a little excerpt from it.
I guess from me, that all of them have to be there.
Right, right.
That's on the...
Right, right. And, you know, like anything else, they even say that they have been challenged, but they've been successful in any challenges that they've ever had. I don't know how many challenges, but they, they meet all the guidelines, procedures to comply with the EEOC, Civil Service Commission, Department of Labor, I mean, all of those, they have to submit all that stuff to all those, those entities to be able to be an approved national test taker.
Okay. I understand what Councilman Tibbs is saying, and test taking is not for everybody, and I know we have to take them, but you're right, Councilman Tibbs, they have redesigned SAT and some entry-level tests to make it, not to make it easier, because some people freeze up on tests, and they have done it. And I'm sure that we've had some people out of that 100 and something, that if they had an oral or another way of doing the testing, they might have passed it with flying colors. So, I don't want to totally throw this out the window because we've been using it, but maybe we might need to, as a whole, we might need to look at something else we can add so that we can get what we need and keep it to stay, like you had 40 to pass?
Correct.
You had 40 to pass, 33 came in. Did anybody ask the magical question, well, what happened to the other seven? Did we reach out to find them, or we just said, oh, you ain't show up well?
We either said, either they were, and I don't know the number, but some of those we scheduled for interviews...
Okay.
And they just didn't show up. And in some of them, we tried to contact them to set up interviews and could not get in touch with them. So, yeah, we reached out to do that, but as an applicant, you know, when you set up an interview, you got to show up for it.
And I, let me just say what I want to say. When we talk about test taking, it is a known given fact that minorities have a rough time. Okay, I'm just going to say it. And so, when we had a person in place before, I'm not saying that they cheated for people to get in, but we had more of a equal, or we had more minorities than we do now. And so, I guess my question now becomes, I know that we're doing stuff to reach out to everybody, you know, we're doing more recruitment, we're asking, we're doing, we're in spots where we used to not be. So, Mr. Jordan, is there anything we can do about this testing, even with the agility? I mean, you know what, there was a lady that took a test, and I heard that she missed it just about a little bit, by a little bit. A female, and she missed it by a little bit. Okay, you know what, I can't even imagine myself holding that hose with that water blowing, but I know that if I want to do that kind of job, I'd have to learn how to do it. So, I guess I'm asking, is there any, is there any kind of training that we give or anything that we could help assist? Like, when you apply for a job at the county department, believe it or not, they actually do, they actually have some people that work with you to do that agility test, to do that run, to do that stuff, even before they hire you at the county, okay? Didn't nobody tell me, I knew it because I've actually applied for a job, and they actually, not just because it was me, it was 19 of us, okay? I knew I didn't really want the job, but anyways, they actually went through the agility part and actually showed people what was, you know, prepped them, this is what's going to be on here, you need to get this down, and they actually did some things to help them to pass. You know, same thing with their written, they actually had a class. We don't do that, do we?
We give them the study material that they can study on their own. When you're talking 308 candidates, you'd probably have to hire somebody to do the training for that.
No, 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 I just asked, I just asked, you know, I just asked, so, okay, thank you.
I guess I'm not comfortable with the similar part, when you said that organizations or companies that they test are similar. I guess I don't have enough information or sufficient information to determine it's similar. And maybe, with all due respect to CPS, maybe they did make adjustments to their test over this 10-year period, but I just don't know that. And, but what I do know is that I have people who have been in the police force, who have been in the fire, in the fire department, who themselves says that this test may be a little strenuous. And also have community residents saying that, hey, maybe we need to look at this test and, and see who they're weeding out, and if they're weeding out the right individuals. I guess what I'm asking is that maybe we do need to explore other options or other vendors to see if these tests are similar, or if there are other vendors who are administering a test that gives us appropriate standards to have effective firefighters and police officers, but possibly administer a test or the test materials is in a different fashion.
I, that's something we can do, absolutely.
I still would do that.
That's fine, that's fine. Any questions? Any further questions? Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Said yes?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Councilman Ball?
Aye.
Councilman Clark?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Councilman Tibbs?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bench?
Aye.
Mayor Protem O'Neil?
Yes.
And Mayor Browning?
Yes.
Six yes votes to no, motion is approved. That takes us to consent agenda item number six, approve a purchase order to Innovative Communications Incorporated for $10,514 for three LED smart TVs for council chambers, and that was Councilman Tibbs.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the staff for getting back to me, asking these questions via email, and got a response timely, and I'm comfortable with the response. However, I just think the public need to know that, and if I understand it correctly, that these funds are restricted, so these funds can't be used to support the fire department. These funds can't be used to support grass cutting, because there will be residents that will come in here during the spring and the summer, and will see two big 80-inch LED smart TVs in here, and, I'm sorry, three, and they're going to, that's, that's going to be my first question, is that, well, how come I can't get the empty lot next to me manicured or, or in a decent, visible condition, but yet council has three 80-inch LED smart TVs? But from understanding, these funds are restricted, and these funds can't be used to support the fire department, or personnel for that matter, or grass cutting or things of that sort.
These funds can only be used, they're called PEG funds, and they're paid from, through franchise fees that the cable providers pay, so they're designated to be for public information, SGTV, that type of activity. The, I think the most recent project was the live streaming council meetings, which we have now on our website, and also these four cameras that we have here were purchased for those, through those funds. And for years, the city just didn't use those funds, I don't know why, but it's a way that we can improve our television station and the way we communicate with our citizens. And currently, the balance in that fund is somewhere around $30,000. So, we started, Jeff Klopsak and I, and a few council members, after our session that we had at the Castle Museum with the display that they had for the presentations, were asked, hey, why don't we have anything good that Councilman Fitzpatrick, and probably Tibbs, and I don't know if Councilwoman Bench can even see our presentations from that angle, city attorney and I cannot see them, probably 50% of the gallery cannot see the presentation, so how can we make it easier for everyone and council to see what we're talking about? So, our first solution we looked at is to do similar to this, a projection screen on this side, so everyone can view it. I believe that, but was about $20,000 to do that project. So, this, the TVs is about half of the cost of that, and we get three of them, and I think it'll really improve the way that we can communicate. So, Councilman Tibbs is correct, and I did get this question from Councilman Clark as well, concerned about it, but exactly right, Councilman Tibbs is exactly right, these funds can't be used for grass cutting, they can't be used for personnel, we might be able to use it for our SGTV employee, but we're funding that already through those same funds, so we don't need to add personnel there. So, this is a way that we can improve this without affecting the general fund. So, I think, I think we had covered that with both council members.
I move to adopt.
Move to adopt.
And motion to, or move to adopt, is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Our next item is number seven, approve a purchase order to Bailey Construction for $5,863 for the frame-in construction of the rear projection screen opening in council chambers. Councilman Tibbs.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be real, real quick and possibly out of order, I'm sure you're going to let me know, but as far as the bidding process is what I had a question about, and the staff, again, you responded very expediently, and, and I'm satisfied with the answer. But I guess the bigger picture, since we were discussing generating revenue for the city, and as far as this bidding process that we have in determining Saginaw-based companies, I think the last time the ordinance was looked at in 2009, and I believe if we support our local businesses, I believe it helps our local economy, and so I don't know if that's just, six years is not necessarily too old for ordinance, but maybe that's just something we need to look at to see if we can support our local businesses better. And this company, I did witness beers from Freeland, I'm sure is a great company, and I have no qualms with them, but I kind of biggy, biggy, piggyback on what Councilman Balls was saying, that we got to do what we can to support our local businesses, and I guess that's what I'm, I'm inquiring, whether or not, if that's something we can look into as far as the bidding process to support our local businesses.
We actually had an update for such an ordinance, I think it was 2013, we had a committee of council members that worked on that, and actually, Councilman Fitzpatrick, were you on that committee? But it was increased the, it used to be a much smaller percentage than 5% that was, so that was increased to make it more beneficial for Saginaw-based businesses. Always, you can always look at changing an ordinance again, but when that committee looked at it, it was something where they did look at other, other ordinances in other places, and that was maybe even a little more generous than other places. We want to keep it so it's a competitive bid process, but still give that advantage if we can, because you're right, it does, you know, if an in-city business does the work, then the, it helps the businesses here, but whoever does the work still needs to be paying income tax in the city, and that's, that's one of the things that Fiscal Services does, is we kind of audit the vendors to make sure that they're paying income tax in the city if they do projects for the city. So, we do, we do follow up on that, it's something that, that I know that, that council can, can change that ordinance if you want to, so if it's something that you're interested in looking at, I would leave it up to the mayor if it's, if that's another committee that you want to set up to look again, and we can provide assistance if that's, if you're interested in that.
Oh, well, I mean, I don't think we're at the point where, it's just, if I, if I may, Mayor, I don't think we're at the point where we have enough information to set up a subcommittee, but what you answered was satisfactory to me. I mean, if it was changed in 2013, I mean, we always got to keep our eye open, but I mean, that seems pretty up-to-date to me.
I think the ordinance that I pulled up today said revised 2013.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Not on my part.
Councilman Ball?
Well, hopefully, when this get reported to the media, they let them know that it's come out of special funds, that we got to spend it out of special funds, you know, there's, you know what I'm saying? Okay, hopefully.
Yeah, well, okay. Been moved and supported to adopt. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Your next order of business tonight is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members. And I'd just like to note that item number two is a mayoral appointment, and it's listed for acknowledgement purposes. Council approval is not required for number two.
First, is there any committee reports?
Committee reports. Being none, then, do we have a motion to...
Shall move.
To approve items one, three, and four? Is that correct?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, our next business tonight is introduction of ordinances, and we do have one, and it's the ordinance to amend Chapter 16, titled Police Officers and Firefighters' Retirement System. The specific sections are titled Retirement Systems Continued, Board of Trustees, and Management of Funds.
Is there an order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know we just did one, three, and four, and number two...
We don't have to take any action at all? It's a mayoral appointment, but aren't we approving that?
No.
Oh, because it reads approval. All right. All right.
That's why I made a point to announce that.
Yeah, yeah, just, just for the clarification, that's, yep. Okay, so we need a motion to introduce this ordinance?
It's been moved.
It's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion on this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
How we pass it? This is not tied to MERS, right? Because when Mr. Jordan made his presentation, he said that the firefighters were not a part, so...
Fire pension fund, so we, we did introduce it last week, but this is a change after we had some discussions with the fire union. Dennis just want to...
The ordinance that was introduced last week, it's the same one, it's the one right up in the...
What we changed is we took out any reference to police officers, and we also referenced, when you, we introduced it last week, and we also referenced the split of the funds going to MERS for the police officers. So, that's what we did with the ordinance last week. Because we were, because the police officer was coming off the board, and one of the five board of trustees...
five board of trustees, we amended the language, we proposed amended language last week when you did it. We received during this time, and this is kind of an open time, that's why it's laid over, we did receive some feedback or information from our firefighters. We had some discussion with them for the language, how we would fill that position. So, what we've introducing tonight, basically, the only change is in that section 16.04, number two, and basically what we did, again, it's the police officer's position, and basically what we did, and we agreed to it, is a duly-registered, tax-paying elector of the city who holds no other current or previous city position to be selected by a majority vote of the mayor, the city manager, and the firefighters. So, we've amended that, that's language that they can live with and that we can live with. So, that's why we are reintroducing it or introducing it tonight.
So, all of the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no.
So, all of these red changes.
Yes.
Were changes that, because they say firefighters, so I want to make sure, if I'm voting on something, that the firefighters know that we voting on this. So, where, like, ordinance 16, where 16.03 retirement system, it starts off B, you know, it says chapter, then it goes right for the firefighters only.
Yes, they actually had a chance to read that. The change is over after it was introduced last week, and the only issue they had was with a, with that section regarding the appointment of filling that vacancy for the board. So, that's why we've changed it. I mean, they talked to us, and we said we'd go ahead and modify it, so it's something we all can live with.
Oh, okay, I'm okay with it, if they okay with it.
Any other questions?
Mayor, if I may...
Yes, you may.
Have you read this? Just recently, there, it looks, it appears to be there's a typo, that there's only one firefighter trustee, so I would believe that it would be in order to amend this motion to strike the S on trustees, but I'll defer to Mr. Jordan, too, and the city manager, as they worked on this, I know, today. But there's only, if I'm not mistaken, there's only one firefighter trustee.
I think it was referencing all of them, trustees, staff, and, Mayor, city manager, firefighter trustees, all three of them are trustees.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Can I have that?
Sure. Yep.
I'm glad you're okay. I'm okay. Any other discussion? Where am I at? Do we need to vote on that? It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This will, ordinance is laid over under the charter provision, then. So, we'll see this back at our next council meeting, is that correct, for final approval?
June 8.
June 8, this will come back for final approval.
Correct. Mayor, our next order of business is resolutions. Our first one is to adopt the resolution approving the fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget.
Need a motion to adopt?
It's been moved.
Been moved and supported. Further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Our second resolution is approving the amount for the fiscal year 2015, 2016, Public Safety Millage.
Motion to adopt?
It's been moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Our third resolution is to accept the Transportation Alternatives Grant from the Michigan Department of Transportation for the North Hamilton Street Enhancement Project.
Need a motion to adopt?
It's been moved.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Our final resolution this evening is authorizing First Merit Bank to manage city funds.
Need a motion?
It's been moved.
Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, all, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I missed you. Counselman Clock.
Forgot to look this way that time.
Okay, I know, I'm going back and forth there, I just...
Thank you. Briefly, I'd like to ask the manager, what, with, you know, certainly First Merit, we appreciate the bank, just curious of what we did to investigate them as the custodian.
Actually, the council several years ago had selected First Merit as the custodian, and they have been the custodian, I think it's probably dating back to the 80s or 90s, and it's with their trust management division. So, up until this time, and the big question with these funds came from the cemetery funds, as we talk about how do we take care of the cemetery. So, we looked at spending the endowment funds, it's actually an endowment, all of these funds, rather than just a custodian, so it's an established endowment, so we looked at, could we spend the principal things? We got a city attorney's opinion, you can't, but the, then we started looking at it more and say, hey, why aren't these funds actively managed better? And so, we're not moving that endowment that was set up, but we're just saying, manage this with some better investments before the real low-level money market funds, which used to provide us a pretty good income on that, but now it needs to be something a little more diversified, but still prudent. So, the analysis that we looked at is just what type of investments did they have there, since they already hold the endowment.
Then if I may ask, are we simply adding that account? Because current, there's five accounts listed that they manage. Are we simply adding one to it?
No, we're get, you know, it gets into accounting and bookkeeping methods. Right now, we have two endowments with this, we have two endowments at First Merit Bank, and one is for water only, and the other one has for other account, for other source funds for those accounts. So, what I'd ask them to do is, for the purposes of accounting, subdivide those accounts, so we know where the revenue's going to go, and specifically, that's going to help out the cemeteries the most.
Cemeteries was already in that one?
Yep, cemeteries was mingled with the other endowment, which includes some more water funds, general funds, and park funds. Yep.
Now that makes sense, okay. Then I have no further questions. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so, they're not go, they are going to oversee this 2.7 mill for the cemetery? They're not oversee, they're going to invest it?
They're going to invest it. They already, they already are the custodian of the endowment, yes. So, we asked them, trying to look at ways to increase revenue and do things differently, what can you do to make us more investment income on those accounts? For the cemeteries portion, and it benefits all the other ones, too, especially parks, although there's not as much money there, the investment income for the cemetery account, we can put back into the cemeteries.
Right.
So, right now, and we won't use it on anything else, we're not allowed to, because it's an endowment. So, if we can get another $40,000, additional $40,000 in revenue, that means we can buy those mowers, we can buy backhoe, you know, different type of things that fit into that capital plan that Mayor Protem was asking about last week for the listing. So, we know what we need to buy, we just need some money to do that, and this is a way where we can generate some money and, from the endowment. If you look back on those accounts, when, when that endowment was managed before, and real passively, with money market accounts, back probably seven, eight years ago, we would get $30,000, $40,000 or more. Now, we get less than $10,000, actually, and I think this fiscal year, with the way, with the returns on money markets, it's probably about $5,000. So...
Terrible.
You get to do, you know, with this type of endowment, you have a prudent man philosophy for investing, so this is going to be still much more conservative than you would have, like, with a pension fund, but it's going to give us a far better return. I mean, if you're thinking about, when you've got a couple million dollars, you should be able to generate some income there, so that we could do some things.
So, we still won't be able to spend it, period?
We will not be able to spend the endowment dollars, only the investment income.
Invest.
Correct. Because the endowment, now, it does get a little complicated, but had the city never did the endowment this way, you could have, but the fact that it's established, the city attorney looked at it, and once you establish, also, First Merit looked at this for us, too, and once you establish an endowment like that, you can't change it.
Oh, my God.
Am I correct that the, your fund is the largest one of these endowments?
Uh, there's, actually, I think the water funds have the most money, if you combine those two accounts, but, yep, out of the parks, the cemeteries has...
The other four, it's the largest one.
Yes, yes.
So, that's why it will benefit the most by having separated that.
Correct, and it makes it easier when we're looking at our accounting functions. I brought in our controller to say, you know, what makes the most sense? I thought it would make the most sense to segregate those accounts out, so we could see the revenue. We're setting up a, we're setting up a sub-account as well to capture the revenue, so we know what it is. So, next year, I want it to accrue for a year, so we can see what's in there, and then next year, when we do the budget process, we'll be able to bring back to you and say, hey, this was the return on it, and it makes sense to spend this money on whatever, whatever projects we have.
Okay, thank you.
Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, your motions and miscellaneous business.
Does anyone else have any miscellaneous business? Counselman Bowles, go right ahead, please.
Wana Gass Credit Union is partnering with One Week One Street, June the 6th. If anybody would like to come and volunteer from 7:00 to 3:00 p.m., we're going to be cleaning up, Rush Street, all of Rush Street. We're going to give them at least $4,000 the first week, and then for the one-week program, we're going to give them another $4,000 to help out in that project. And eventually, we're going to see if we can build some houses over there, get some grants to help out that neighborhood.
Counselman Tibbs?
Just briefly, Mayor, thank you. You know, I mentioned in my opening comments that I was going to ask for resolution proclamation, and it's just like a show of support. We did one similar, I believe, about a year ago for Bring Our Girls Home. I understand the mayor, or, excuse me, the manager and the city's attorney opinion that it appears to be lobbying, and that would be against our better judgment, and I guess I would have to trust the city attorney and the, and the city manager judgment on this. I guess the alternative would be ask for some type of an opinion, but all that does is cost us money, so. But I guess I just wanted to know, let the fire department know that we do support you, since we did adopt the submission of the safer grant unanimously, so there's no doubt in my mind that the city council would support this firefighter receiving the safer grant.
Well, and I take a step further, there's not a person...
At this table that does not support our firefighters and their efforts, and we certainly appreciate all the concessions that they've taken over the years. They certainly have, as well as many of the other unions over the years, and we certainly support that. We're hoping for the safer grant, but if not, if that does not happen, they're already indicated they're willing to sit with the manager. We need to then sit here at this table and make some tough decisions and see where we want to go with that. And so, our support, consensus is totally, I agree with you 100%. Is there anybody else? Counselman...
I think that was, council members, if you can, restoration outreach, restoration outreach, Community Outreach is having their fundraising on next Friday. Dr. Nash Band is playing, it will be a speaker, is at the Bancroft, is also at a city function, at the Martini Bar upstairs, if at all possible, if y'all can make it, try to make it, because it's for worthwhile cause. We already support them with community by grant money, but this should be a nice affair. I mean, if you've never heard, Jack Nash's band, you missed a treat, you know, but they will be playing on next Friday, on this coming Friday at 6:00 at the Bancroft. Thank you.
If I could just add one more, as a police retire...
Mr. Jordan, and I do want to acknowledge our old credit union, Saginaw Municipal Employees' Credit Union, which is now Family First Credit Union, which has a tremendous amount of police retirees that are going to be affected by this MERS. They have contacted all their retirees, they are making adjustments, because they're going from bi-weekly to once-a-month check, and that is for some of those, especially for some of the spouses or the beneficiary, because the officer has retired, that means a great deal to them, and so they've, they've really done a super job, and we can't say enough about the help that they're giving us. And it's really very rewarding, whether it's this one, or Wana Gass is doing a tremendous job, and, and all the rest of them that are here, they do a tremendous job, and we appreciate everybody. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved.
It's been moved.
All in favor signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carries.